I think I do have LTE. Oh, LTE. Going to wait before we start?
I'm not on till eight thirty. I just thought I'd get connected so I didn't have to go through this.
Yeah, yeah, get connected. You gotta be connected. Ready?
Yep.
Okay, welcome everybody online and those in the audience. Today is Monday, December 9th. I'll call the meeting in your order at this time. Ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody get a chance to look at these agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve.
The only thing that might, um, the discussion on the FEMA grant really should have been underneath where Juan is on. So I don't know if we want to keep him or if we just want to move him up a little bit.
Here is Juan. Oh, at eight oh five.
Juan's the first up. He's not here yet.
Yeah, he's at eight oh five, yeah. Well, let's go down to get down to that part. If he's not here, we can postpone that. So we're gonna get right into our agenda. These are all action items.
Would you want me to move to approve the agenda as submitted?
Oh, yeah. Yes, please.
I would move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
If you can move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First one up is the Office of Emergency Management. This is in your packet. And I think this is just the annual Homeland Security Grant. EMPG grant.
Did anybody let Juan know that he was up eight o'clock?
Let's talk to him. The door just opened like a minute ago, so he's probably on his way up.
Okay.
This grant is for half of his salary. And it looks like it's about the same as last year.
Gabby, do we, do we budget then for the rest of his salary?
Yes. And that's twelve thousand seven hundred and fifteen with another twelve thousand seven hundred and fifteen for the total of twenty-five thousand.
We pay him more than that.
Um, there's some other funds that come in too. I don't remember what his final salary ends up being.
Thirty-two or something.
Yeah, I think so. Around there. Oh, let's see where I'm at here. Emergency Management Grant, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in your packet. It would be the EMPG grant.
So there must be two of them. We have the Emergency Management one and the EMPG grant.
There's Emergency Management Grant, and then there's the Homeland Grant, and then there's the rehab from him later on. This is actually, why is there two of them? Twelve thousand seven fifteen.
State Homeland Security and then EMPG.
They're not the same thing. This is the Emergency Management Grant and this is the EMPG.
I was just looking for Juan to clarify that.
What's this matching amount? And then total award amount is twenty-five. These two are the same. Is that... So they're, they're doing a total of twenty-five? What's matching? It says subscriptium?
That's how, there he is.
Subrecipient.
Oh, you can tell us what you're...
Where Juan? Where are you? You're up, you're up, Juan. Oh, yeah, we're on the very first one on the agenda today, the Office of Emergency Management Grant. This is just a renewal, right? For your salary.
It's two grants. You should have got paperwork for two grants. The State Homeland Security Program.
Yeah, that's the next one.
And the Emergency Management Grant.
We're doing the EMP, EMPG grant right now.
Yep, that's the Emergency Management Grant.
And that's for twelve thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Correct. For a total of twenty-five, four thirty-one, forty-two. And then the other one is for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eight cents.
That's...
And one of these is your salary.
That is the EMPG grant.
Okay. And then the other one is?
The State Homeland Security Program, and that's what we do for radio communications and interoperable radio communication.
Hey, Juan, does this, this EMP, um, it's showing two halves here, does it?
Yeah, so that's a fifty-fifty match. So, um, the way that works is uh, you'll be reimbursed twelve thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
That's, so they reimburse that then?
They reimburse half of that.
Okay.
Twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve. I'll make a motion that we approve and sign the Office of Emergency Management Subrecipient Agreement with State Land Homeland Security Grant Program.
So that's the both of them.
Well, the Office of Emergency Management is next, and that's in your, in your packet. It's from the...
That's the second one.
That's the second one.
There's two of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
You're doing this?
I just approved the one that's the second one down.
EMPG grant for this one.
EMPG grant, I'll second that.
And a motion is second to approve the Office of Emergency Management Grant for 2024. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did you not bring paperwork?
I brought paperwork.
Okay, well, let's do the State Land Homeland Security one next.
And that's the twenty-nine eight thirty-seven oh eight, and that one is for radios.
Interoperable Communications, and what it's for this year is to, we've been having such an issue with dispatch being down. This is so that we could have mobile dispatch. So we're gonna buy some equipment so that CAD will remain to stay up. The computer automated dispatching system so that we can continue to dispatch even though during power outages outside the Office of Dispatch.
So where will that be and who's dispatching?
It's gonna be with their mobile risk pet, uh, with their mobile dispatch that they have already, because they have the radio mobile dispatch. So we're gonna add that, um, component to that kit.
And so did we have one, one equipped?
We never had one.
We just never had one.
So right now when dispatch goes down, they do, uh, if radios go down, we're using cell phones. But the computer aut, the computer automated dispatching goes down as well because it's based off of our tones and things. So if there's an issue, they can just punch it right back up, CAD's back up. We can still read our monitors, get it on our phones, um, and don't have to use the radio and still see where all the dispatching and addressing and what we're being dispatched to.
Will that take most of the twenty-nine thousand?
Yes.
I thought that's, it's a little confusing to me because I thought the whole purpose of going with Payette was so that we didn't have this issue. I mean, if, because if word down, Payette should be up and then it automatically...
So that's, that's for redundant, that's for redundant. But the way that the supervisor put it to me was is this will keep CAD going. So it won't, all have to be done through phone or radio. It'll still be our monitoring system that we get notified. If you notice, each of the stations has screens and we all have, um, devices in our vehicles, and it gives us all the information that's being entered into the run, like patient, what the chief complaint is, where the addressing is, any special considerations, shows us en route, those types of things.
Okay.
We want to make sure we continue that.
So this is for a three-year period. Is this, Juan, award? We'll take care of all of that? We won't have ongoing cost?
Um, other than maintaining the system though.
It goes through February twenty-seventh.
So then we will need to budget to maintain the system moving forward.
That'll be through whatever dispatching budgeting is, which is the regular stuff. I'm sure it's in there.
I would move that we approve.
Operations plan.
And sign the Idaho Office of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Grant.
So I can move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You want to bring those up, Juan, or we can sign them?
Yeah, so the SHMP has, uh, two places to sign. I only need your signatures.
And then are you doing the EMPG grant too, for some recipient?
That's just, we'll be just approved. So this is the MPG.
Everything got put on there twice.
That's all right. So I need a signature on this page, and then, uh, we have signature, two signatures on this page. So there's one signature there, and one signature there. There's two signatures.
On this side.
So there's one where it's printed, that's you.
On this side.
And then you sign on the other side. Let me look. Let me look that up quick.
Yep, I think you're right. Print and title.
Yep, and then?
Then sign on the other side.
Correct. And I think it's the same for this one.
They'll get back?
Yeah, and, but this one has two places to sign.
He's figured out how to open up his folks' phone and call, and call Sherry.
That's funny.
And then this one has here and there.
Okay, let me do that one real quick.
I can do the rest real quick. While you're doing that, if that's okay, sir. Okay, I, I was gonna give a little update on the fire mitigation efforts for post-fire activities. The, I have yet to meet with the Forest Service on the fire report um, for the fires on the Cascade Complex. Um, I've seen the report. Um, I reviewed the report findings a few times, um, with Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, I will tell you that the, where, you may have heard this already, but the majority, or rather, a very vast majority of the areas of concern are in the yellow, which is very minimal um, for runoff. Um, I'll explain that because that's, because of the vegetation types as we move closer into the bases of those mountains or hills. Um, with it changing so drastically into a mixed con from sawalpine fir and higher elevation vegetation types. Um, it really slows the fire down, and the fire, rather than nuking things or burning things completely out, burns at a relatively slower pace with higher flame length, lower flame lengths. Uh, really, it just cleans up the litter fuels. It doesn't allow for, you know, huge areas of concern or big burnout areas. We didn't see that. Other than one little sliver within the Willow Creek portion of the south end of the reservoir. Um, in that little drainage, there was one area that, uh, was heightened. It was not quite red, but it's not yellow either. Um, that they really worked on this fall and continue, will continue to work on, um, this spring.
When you say they're working on it, Juan, what does that mean?
So when they did rehab, that was one of the first places that got rehabbed. Um, so they, they opened up the creeks, replaced, they rehabbed the lines that they put in to help um, and try to get everything back to as close to regular vegetation and, um, aspect and slope, which means back to its normal contour. Um, so they did that, uh, as they could, as the fire was moving through. So the way the fire report came works is not only are they doing the study, but uh, as the fire allows and moves through areas, they start to work. So they started working, uh, as they could
Really?
during the fire season in areas so that it, there was not as much rehab that needed. So they can get as much done prior to weather ending events and those types of things.
Do they replant trees and seed at all?
Uh, usually they do that the year after.
Okay.
But they, they try to get the vegetation types cleaned up, uh, get all of the, any of the direct lines or indirect lines and get them rehabbed so that the flow requirements, any streams that were, um, affected or those types of things, they, they go ahead and fix those, take snakes out, those types of things, so that, um, it will flow as natural as possible. So they've done that in a lot of the areas. Um, they will continue to do that and monitor those um, for the Cascade Complex, including the lava fire.
Did they do that for the Four Corners? Did they come back? So they did all of that and then?
They did, so yeah, so Four Corners, they did the same thing. So if you remember towards the end of the Four Corners, there were still crews doing all kinds of things out there, and that's what they were doing. They were rehabbing what they could uh, prior to the end of the season. And, and moving through. So I, they just finished the fire report for the Logan Creek Fire. I have, uh, communications with them, and we're gonna be meeting before the end of the year uh, to discuss what they'll be doing uh, and what they've done, uh, for Edwardsburg and the Logan Creek residents uh, and those fire rehab, uh, needs uh, out there. So, um, those are in effect. I am meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers uh, and a few of the forest individuals on Thursday uh, on a Zoom meeting. Uh, and that's just to further discuss those, and it's gonna be, uh, it's all the both complexes, so it's be the Boise, the Payette, um, or Boise, Jim, us and, and Adams County Emergency Managers. They're gonna review in further detail what they're looking at, and then, um, that way they can determine the funding mechan, that way, once everything gets reviewed, then they'll go back with the Silver Jackets and they'll determine any funding mechanisms that would be available for the fire-affected areas. I will tell you they will be rated, or ranked, rather. Um, and I'll tell you that on that side, in Jim and Adams County, it's almost all red. Um, they've already had issues with some bridges and some roads and, uh, those types of things. So that is a real high priority for them is the other side, and they did a lot of work and are continuing to do work as of we speak today. Uh, because they did almost lose a bridge and stuff like that. So they are working over there right now. Um, continuing, but the, because weather permitting, it's letting them. Um, so...
So it burned really hot on the other side of that road.
Right, and it, because it's different vegetation type, um, you know, more open field, scabbed areas of wood. Once you burn, the few structure particle, structure stuff that's holding the mountain together, um, allows for a more, a way, a way bigger runoff with debris. And that's what we're concerned about is, is the debris runoff, because those are extremely devastating as they move through. Now, we did have some nuked areas on this side, but they're way up high, um, in the sawalpine fir. Uh, most of them are in those rocky areas, so we're gonna talk about those. I do have a couple of those areas circled, um, to explain to me what the hydrology would look like. Um, for runoff coming in and abutting the mixed con as it comes down, is it gonna create issues, those types of things, even though we're in the yellow? So I'll be working on that with them as we move forward.
Um, I got one question for you, I guess, and just my, the way my brain works. After a fire like that, in your opinion, are there areas that, some of that burned timber that is commercially available can be logged out of there and cleaned up?
So there will be some salvage areas put up for sure, but you gotta remember, sir, that generally when a salvage area comes up, there's usually a lawsuit that follows to inhibit the salvage.
I know, it just...
And then it holds it off long enough that, once everything is cleared, these logs are no longer salvageable.
Yep.
So that tends to be the pattern. So we might get lucky. Um, I know a lot of bore feet burned that they were gonna log this coming season, so um, it'll, the state and the Forest Service will be affected by that.
Okay. I got a couple of questions. Juan, do you know, is this gonna affect the grooming on the other side, I think, for the dog?
So I know they were discussing some grooming things.
Okay.
Um, I did talk to the state about that, um, and they're supposed to be getting a hold of, if they haven't already, our grooming people. Uh, I know, I haven't heard exactly because I don't do that kind of activity. I just heard there were some discussions on some, a couple of the areas. I heard it actually might open up some more area or something like that for grooming as well, so there might be some more groomed.
My second question. Did you ever get your details worked out with our road supervisor on that grant?
Okay. Um, so I talked to, um, the granting people. Actually, they came to me very concerned that we were going to withdraw our HMP grant, which is the Hazard Mitigation Project for the Four Corners. Um, they were concerned because, um, they didn't understand why we were backing out. Um, so I said, well, I'll look into it and we'll see. Their other concern is, is backing out of the grant with the very high likelihood that we would be awarded is not, maybe cumbersome for us looking for other grants. Because if we turn down this grant, why would we be going for other grants? Now, I understand that there's a cost match of twenty-five percent, so that might be a factor. One of the things that was brought up was the road department couldn't handle the workload. So when I talked to Mrs. Cleverly, who was the grant manager for this, said that we can hire a contracting outfit to do it. So the road department wouldn't have to. That could be part of the grant. Um, there is some environmental and hydrology stuff that needs to be done. They could, um, the state could set it up so it could be in two phases. One would be the study, um, portion, which would be phase one, and then the phase two would be the construction portion of the grant. They can also hire, if it's an issue with the managing of the grant, a pro, a project manager. They can hire a project manager, um, to maintain and do all of the grant things um, on the ground.
Before we go really deep into this, this is on the agenda at eight forty-five, and I suspect we're gonna have Ken and Dan in here.
Okay, so there's a lot of opportunities to use the grant, and that's what I told Susan that I would portray, and I can portray it again here in a few minutes.
I apologize for not getting that on. Confused with that, but I suspect those guys will show up for that.
Uh, we can talk about that again, but anyway.
So that's still a process.
Uh, they're actually waiting for my response after this meeting.
Okay.
Because it's already, there already was an email sent saying we were going to decline, but Susan wanted me to have a conversation with all of you, which is now at eight forty-five, but, um, to discuss. And then whatever you guys decide, then I'll call them and say whatever that decision is.
And I had asked Juan, you know, even if Dan has another avenue to go, we can get both grants. So we should never...
I don't, I don't, I, it's not my purview, other than because of my networking and working with other grants with Susan, she's like, she was very concerned that we weren't going to continue the Four Corners HMP um, was all, so...
I think from my position, actually, my concern is that the decision to cancel the grant was made without any input from this board. And I think that's what we really need to talk about.
Again, that isn't my purview, sir. I'm not trying to, I'm trying to stay in my lane. I'm just relaying what was relayed to me.
I appreciate you letting us know.
I was just concerned because it was like, wait a second, I'm going to the Silver Jackets and Army Corps of Engineer on Thursday to say, hey, I know we're yellow, but I would really like some opportunity as well as the other side for some funding. Give me some ideas so I can give them to our grant person to review and look at.
Juan, I think it's important that we have more open communication between our grant writer, our road department, and our, uh, emergency manager.
That's really the main issue for...
Yeah, it's not even this board, but they, we need to have everybody talking before those decisions are made, so...
Yep, yep. I just, they didn't really blindside. They just said, hey, can you find out what's going on here? And I said, sure, I can do that.
We'll make sure that...
I can ask.
Email right now.
That's what he said. If you don't ask, you ain't gonna find out.
And as soon as I find out more information on Thursday, um, we'll go through. I have talked to Ken a little bit, and Ken actually put out a, uh, our grant person put out a email about a, a specific funding mechanism, but no one really took the bait on that one, so um, I don't know why. It's just he didn't get any response, uh, or enough response to, to pursue that, but uh, as funding becomes available, um, I already gave him that, him their email, and they have his email, so um, as they determine funding mechanisms for any other reports put out through the Army Corps of Engineers or the fire report, they'll be passing that along, and if not, I'll make sure Ken gets those so we can, you can pursue them for the county and the road department and other agencies, so... That's all I had until fifteen minutes from now.
Okay. Thanks, Juan.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to the next agenda item is an action item. This is a discussion decision on pre-approved vendors. And I'm not sure who was bringing this forward.
We put this on when we were talking about the signatory authority and whether we're going to allow pre-approved vendors, um, up to like a certain dollar amount. So the road department would come in. Remember, we talked about the fact that, um, they, they have people they work with all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So if we get them pre-approved on an annual basis, making sure we have all the insurances in place, you know, what, what do we need in place in order to approve these? And I think what we do is we go back to each one of the divisions and say, give us your, you know, five pre-approved vendors. And really, it would be, what, buildings and grounds, road department, person rack.
Motor pool.
Yeah, motor pool.
Motor pool is probably the biggest one, if I have to guess.
Yeah.
And they're, they just, see, I agree. They, they need to bring and just make sure their vendors are are insured and, you know, all the stuff that we always have to deal with, you know, in my business.
Well, it'd be nice to have a list somewhere for everybody, so everybody knows, hey, this is already...
They're already pre-approved.
Already got them.
I agree.
Right off on it, and we're all good.
That's gotta come from them.
And I think that they need to go through legal once, make sure that everything's in place. And then also their contracts need to be the accepted county contracts to make sure that they include all of the information that's necessary to make sure that we are legal.
So I would make that part of your motion.
Then I would move that we create a pre-approved vendors list for the county where each division gives us their pre-approved vendors at the beginning of the year, in January of each year, stating that they have all of the insurances in place and that their documentation meets our legal requirements. And then each January, we will pre-approve that vendor list for the year. And they can use this vendor list up to the dollar figure needed for bid or to go out for an RFP.
Yeah, and I think we need to have that discussion maybe, because state codes seventy-five thousand or more has to be done, so when we talk about some of these delegations of authorities, I think we need to look at those dollar figures. When we get to that. Next. Hey, we got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
You get that, Gabby? Got a motion and a second to approve a pre, a list of pre-approved vendors for all departments in January of every year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I will work with Brian to get out an email to all of the county to make that happen, if that's okay with you guys.
And I'm not sure what they, you know, being a vendor, I mean, it's, it'd be like a hard, hardware down here, whoever that is, true value. I mean, that could be a vendor, you know, just anybody out there, the fuel guys, that's a vendor.
Propane, I mean, the list really goes on and on and on.
Anybody that we are normally use. We just need information that, that they're pre-approved, and that's what you guys use, and irreparable and blah, blah, blah. That's how I look at pre-approved vendors.
Okay, Cinda, come on up. You're next on the list, or next agenda item is an action item. This is the Cuff. Setback variance. And this is in your packet.
Can you hit the screen, please, Gabby?
Give me. Here. Take it out. You get the internet?
Yes.
So whenever you're ready... So whenever you're ready, I'll turn it over to you, Cinda.
Okay. Fine, so. Right, wrong?
Right, wrong. I think that thing is on, sounds like it's on.
Looks like it's on. Have they got unplugged on the other end of that phone?
Which one? Looks like it's on.
What do you need? What do you need the screen force in that?
I was going to show you the pictures and things like that.
We have them in our packet room.
Yes, I can do that. Okay, so the staff report for V five twenty-four Gthh setback variance. Michelle Gthh is requesting a variance to relax the rear setback from seven point five feet to zero feet. For a deck attached to an existing house. Rear property line of Butts land managed by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. She would like to replace the existing deck, which does not meet the required setbacks and encroaches onto the land managed by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. Those deck would be entirely on private property. Point two-four acre site is addressed at twelve eight forty-two Morning Drive. The home was constructed in nineteen seventy-six, according to the assessors' records. The application includes pictures of the site, existing deck and the property line location. At a properly noticed public hearing on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the variance. Per Valley County Code, if the commission's recommendation is unanimous and there is no opposition to the approval of the variance, then the board need not hold a public hearing. But may make a decision at a regular agenda item. Only the applicant must be notified as to the time on the agenda. Agency comments received. Jason Dobus Cascade Field Station Manager for the Bureau of Reclamation. Said that the bureau would like to have the setbacks enforced. Without a setback in place, there's no reasonable expectation that this adjacent property owner would stop encroaching onto reclamation managed lands. DEQ sent their basic boilerplate letter. Mike Reno Center District Health has no objections. Emily Harm Call Airport Manager has no objections, no comments. And then Jess Ellis Donley Fire Marshal has no comments or concerns. I listed the P and Z Commission's conclusions um, for your review. The commission is tasked to consider the interests of the adjacent property owners of the neighborhood of utilities and various public agencies. And they believe the use is in harmony with the general purpose of the adopted ordinances and policies. The existing deck is built over the property line onto land managed by the Bureau of Reclamation. Proposed deck reconstruction will order the trespass issue. The Bureau of Reclamation um, did contact the current own, have not contacted the current owners regarding this trespass issue. And if the home was demolished and a new building constructed, then the new construction would be required to meet setbacks. The commission unanimously recommended approval of the variance request. Approval will not have an undue adverse impact on the environment. Approval will not have an undue adverse impact on adjoining private property. Will not have an undue adverse impact on government services and is consistent with the Valley County Comprehensive Plan. Listed different areas of the Valley County Code for your review as it can concerns variances and setbacks.
Let me take that to page sixteen.
What?
I think Gabby's driving this one. Got around if you could.
One more per set, Gabby, really shows this.
Keep, keep going a little bit. There's some pictures that show everything.
I was trying to see the pictures. I don't even see the deck that they were, that they're talking about.
No, keep going down, please. Okay, so that's what it's going to look like. White is the new deck.
New deck, okay.
Yes.
The white isn't.
Yeah, if you keep going. The yellow line is where the property line is. And it goes, currently goes over the deck.
I see, yep.
Keep going. You can see where the property line goes over the current deck. Going, please.
Got it. I mean, a seven and a half foot setback here at the house.
It's an aerial. And then that's the house. The adjacent house that appears to be set, the adjacent lot is set closer to the lake than this lot. And so it's not going to create a visual impact. Keep going, please. Is that it? Up, there we go. See that house sits forward? That's because the lot sits forward.
So that lot is actually closer to the water line than this lot.
Okay, and that ends my staff report.
This picture here, the redesign. Picture where they're.
With the white?
Yeah, it's in the white gray. Of what they propose.
Yes, they're, they're gonna be building against the property line.
So they're replacing the old deck with a new deck?
Yes.
My question to you is if the bureau has asked for them to, for us to follow the setback rules, why did P and Z go through this? I don't understand that.
They don't believe it's an impact to the bureau. Bureau hasn't contacted the current owners.
The bureau is one voice. I mean, that's they.
They're adjacent property.
Just like, you know, anybody else can. When they.
Can you go back to this picture?
Solving an issue. I think we're creating.
Oh, I don't know what page it is.
Um, you know, the applicant also has um, some aging parents and things without a new deck. It's, it's gonna be.
Thirty-one, Gabby.
There you go.
Without replacement of this deck, it's, it's a safety hazard. That was part of the presentation also.
What I'm looking at, Cinda, is that corner could be made shorter to follow the seven foot setback. It'd be a smaller deck, I understand that. But that, that way, we're also appealing, PC what the bureau record is asking for. I think we gotta be careful about. Allow this, then we're gonna, you're gonna get a whole bunch more possibly.
I look at it like we're correcting an issue. We're not creating any.
Well, they're taking it back to zero at least, but why not go back on that corner, which is nine and a half feet and still give you two and a half foot deck to get around the corner and still.
You have the same issue out here then.
The bureau record is asked.
You can't even get by the stairs then.
I know, but all that would have to be a smaller public land. Out of mine.
If they, just, just so everyone knows that we only measure setbacks for things over three feet in height.
That what side of this deck?
I don't know. But the applicant is here if you have questions.
So tell me the name of the advocate, Cinda.
Michelle.
Michelle?
Yes, sir.
You wanna come to the mic, Michelle, please? State your name for the, and the town you live in, please.
Good morning, Michelle Guth and I live at Eagle, Idaho. This is in reference to my property one two eight four two Morning Drive in Donley, Idaho. Um, I certainly can appreciate your concern, but when we purchased the property, we were not even aware that we were already encroaching over BOR land. It wasn't until we put in for the permit that was brought to our attention. So it was referenced in the report. We're actually are correcting that prob- problem by bringing it out of BOR land and strictly into our property. Um, we are pretty much replacing what is there. The issue we're having with trying to go back, if you were to meet the seven and a half foot setback requirement. As you mentioned, we would literally have twenty-four inches to step out of the property. The property sits up pretty high, unfortunately, so it's a, a pretty good drop to the ground. So again, as um, Ms. Herrick mentioned, we have parents, three parents in our eighties that cannot navigate stairs. So they would not even be able to go out the house to the property with the, the elevation of the property. Um, with respect to the water line, it does have that thirty-foot setback requirement from the high water mark. The furthest portion of that closest is sixty-seven feet, so we're, we're quite a ways back from the water line. And it is a rarely unique property. As you can see, it goes in a sharp angle. The property next door used to be part of that parcel, but the people for which we purchased it from subdivided it. And they built the house and they, there's their property way up, so we're really the only ones that've been impacted. The deck itself was there since the cabin was there. We're trying to keep the structural appearance and everything to match that, what was there. We're not tearing it down, putting up a big old house. We're just trying to keep it consistent to what's been there since the seventies. So the deck itself was built over um, tree logs and so forth, so it's, it's in a really bad disrepair. It, it is not safe. So we're not trying to do anything huge whatsoever. It's just trying to find something that's actually functional at this point and replace what is currently there.
Well, and I appreciate the fact that it's not your house or the cabin corner. It's the, the deck corner. And I think you're looking at, this picture is the one that really stands out to me is if you take that back seven feet from that old one. You still have plenty of room to get around the corner of the house, the deck on that other side.
The deck on the other side, sir, is, is just a walkway. It's not, there's not a, a functional deck there. It's just a walkway. Cause there's pretty large trees that run all along that side of the house, so that's not a deck, that's a walkway. So currently, the only functioning deck we have is right there in the back side of the house. And we even looked at options to try to go to the side of the house, but the well is there and there's very large mature trees there, which we would not want to have to cut down. We worked really hard to keep the, all of the um, natural landscaping in place.
You're saying this side over here is not a deck?
It's correct. It's a walkway. It literally just has a railing and currently it's like three and a half, I see, what you think about, four feet wide currently.
Hey, any more questions for Michelle and for Cinda?
Is BOR in the room? I just, my opinion is we're correcting a situation. We're not creating a larger situation. So, I mean, yeah, BOR requested, but there's a lot of things we request, you know, that uh. And I think that this, you know, I think the owner is trying to correct an issue. That's my, my opinion.
You know what I'm thinking about?
Yeah, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. Is there any reason you can't run the deck further? I don't know what direction, be toward the left side of the picture?
Um, there's not enough room with the property line. There's, yeah, we wouldn't count meet the setback requirement there either.
Oh, that's, we're private property, got you.
Correct.
Yeah, what is that, Cinda? Seven and a half feet off private property?
Yes, seven and a half on each side and seven and a half from the bureau.
Right. It's tight, no matter what you do.
Mm-hmm. And, and we've been very cognizant in trying to do everything, you know, properly permitting and everything where I've seen a lot of people on the lake. I mean, I've, I've been up here for over twenty years and I've seen a lot of people just disregard it and cutting down stuff on BOR. And we have been very, very respectful of the rules. So again, we were not even aware until we put in for the permit that we were not meeting the setback requirements and encroaching on BOR land. And it's been like that since the seventies, so we are trying to, trying to correct that as best we can. While still having a functional space that our parents can navigate.
I'll put out there and see if it passes or not, but I would move that we approve the setback variance. It's V five twenty-four for Guth.
Explain that again?
I move that we approve the variance. So they would be on that property line instead of putting it back another seven and a half feet.
But I'd, I'd, I'd push that back another foot. I mean, that's, the picture's shown right on it. I'd back it up at least a foot from that. I don't like it right on the line.
Just my motion dies for a second.
Your motion, actually, I think the latest rules is even if it's no second, you can still vote on that. Um, I, I think we should kick it back maybe more than a foot, at least three or four feet. If there's still room to get around the corner to that walkway or whatever you want to call it on the right-hand side. And plenty of room to build a big deck. If the bureaus ask us to do it. I think if you allow this, you're gonna have other folks with similar issues be coming here and asking for the same.
One of them's a variance and they have to prove why and one's individual.
If you took the deck and made it the same angle as that front line and moved it back four feet and built the deck that way, you still have the beautiful deck. Seven feet would still do the same thing.
We, um, can I comment to that, please?
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, we tried that. And we actually went out and we spray painted and did all of that. And when you um, do the seven feet, you still have really, I mean, that corner to get around the house is so tight that twenty-four inches, we, we can't even really get the two decks to match. And you really don't have any functional space at an angle because of that seven foot. You literally have just a little corner back there that would literally hold like a little tiny four, four-person table. So it looks expansive, but it's, it's actually not a very big footprint. So currently on the deck, literally there is a four, a tiny little four-person table. And a couple of chairs. That's all it currently fits. So it looks big, but it's actually a very small deck.
Let me ask you this question then. Just looking at this. If you bring this over to the seven and a half foot setback. You, you have time running coming down. And you just make your deck like this.
Yep.
And go back. Stay, you know, two or three feet off this, this line. I'd be good with that. I know it's not.
Make it as much.
Thing, but it'd give you a very good size deck. It's just, just the property that you're dealing with there with that wedge.
So with, with that, um, the other issue we run into is then um, ways to get off of the deck. And having the stairs not end up encroaching as well, because the stairs have to be, the corner of the stairs have to be there as well. So we couldn't figure out a way, when we looked at that as an option too, for stair placement to get off of the deck.
Can you get the stairs off the right-hand side?
Go around to the side of the house and come down, you mean?
If you had the stairs there on the right-hand side.
They're about the back and off the side.
Still coming straight off here. Just to come down here, start your stairs here. You walk down the stairs this way onto the ground.
Yep, and, and again, great idea. We looked at that, but because of the side deck that comes down the side and, and the slope of the property. You'd have to go downstairs and build another set of stairs to get even back to the side of the property. And again, I'm trying to make it so it's functional for my parents as well. So they couldn't, yeah, they'd have to go down a set of stairs and up a set of stairs just even get to the side of the property, to the back of the house. So the only way you could, for them to get, they'd have to always be able to come through, go through the house to access the deck if I was to do that. They couldn't access it from the outside of the house.
So I'm looking at this picture, which shows that side. I think you could build all kinds of steps. You have the ground sloped, which is good. It keeps the water away from your cabin. But I think there's opportunity you could put the steps down in the other corner.
You mean towards the side of the house?
And this where the wedge is down, you could come off that corner too as well. You've got what?
Like south?
19 feet there, says 19. See it?
Yeah.
That's a big deck.
Is it okay if I have my contractor speak to that?
10 feet by 14 feet, 38-foot wide deck. You may get 40-foot wide deck easily. I want to make the motion then that we, not the variance and ask that, how do we do that, we send it back, Cindy, or?
No, you just, you just deny it. It was a recommendation to you.
I understand that, but I think I'm opening up a can of worms here. If we do this, other lot owners.
So you would say precedents, and then variances are only due to topographic reasons.
Right. And there's no topographical issues there at all. You can see by the pictures that the deck on one side is shorter than the tower on the other side, matching the topography. I don't, I think there's an easier fix.
Now, the PNC is a recommendation, you are the final decision. And then there's, after your decision, there's the 60-day period for motion, well, 14 days for the motions for reconsideration and all of that.
So we... So if we deny, they can come back and show another. Does that go back to PNC, it comes to us?
Well, they'd have to redesign the deck to meet the setback.
Can we go ahead and approve what, what will with the variance?
So if you deny it based upon the current application due to the precedents and lack of topographic reasons, that is a final decision. They can come back through the PNC commission and ask for a different type of variance. I mean, they can ask again.
Instead, they can come back and say for a two-foot variance or a three-foot variance or a four-foot. You know, whatever their contractor would recommend. But I don't think we should be taking stuff to zero. Because there's a lot of cabins around that way.
If we, if we pushed it back that added foot, do you think that would help the concern?
I think you have three different opinions up here. We're going to have to find consensus.
Just kind of.
You're that, you're that consensus vote. You've got to decide what you're doing, and let's move on. We're late.
So if you don't want a second, Neil, then you can propose your own motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, we allow you people to go ahead and figure out how to make that deck seven and a half foot off that property line. And I'd like to see you get back a couple of feet away from that BOR line.
So you're going two feet, three feet?
Well, whatever. You've got to have seven and a half off the personal property line.
You're telling them how far off they need to be. What do you want to put in your motion?
Make a motion that we approve a variance for seven and a half feet off the property line and two feet off the BOR line.
So seven and a half feet off the sideline, two feet off the BOR line.
That's correct.
And we would have to deny this variance, and they would have to come back with a new variance, asking for that two feet.
I, I think you have enough leeway to.
We have enough to do that?
I do.
I'll second that motion.
You've got a motion to second to, I'm going to say.
Amend the variance?
Amend the variance to require a two-foot setback from the bureau property line. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Hold the favor, please, Sally.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And your builder gets to be creative.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, variances are a relaxation of something.
Okay, Dan, and Juan, you guys can come on up to the table if you want. This is the next agenda item, it's not an action item. This is a discussion on a FEMA grant.
And unfortunately, Ken is on vacation, so he is not.
I don't know. But I guess, try and pick up some speed here. What kind of talk we had earlier. And about this, it was turned down by you guys because you didn't think you could do the work.
I'm the new guy, so I assumed I had the authority to do that, not knowing the full realm of.
I understand that.
The direction. As I looked at the application when I first arrived here, it was, I want to say there was probably five or six pages of in-depth questions. And as I went through it, I go, at that time, I don't know if we have enough time to go through this. So I ended up contacting Susan.
Justin?
Beverly.
Beverly. Move, Susan.
And so I talked with her in regards to how, how to best, she gave me a lot of positive reinforcement that, you know, I think we're close, I think you're going to get it. Here's a few steps that we could do to modify it, to make it better. I took that advice and ended up submitting it. And I'm going to say that was August, July time frame.
Did you have to write it? Ken, oh, Ken wasn't here yet.
Ken wasn't here. So I took, so we were in between people. So I took it upon the road department to see what I could do to receive the funds. And as I looked at it, I thought, I think I could, I think I can get there, but there's an awful lot of questions here.
That makes more sense to me now.
So I ended up saying I probably need some more information from FEMA. So that's when Susan said, well, why don't we have a little get together and see what, see what we can do to make it a little bit better? Well, she gave me the advice of, because it's in two phases. She gave me the advice to go into one phase and answer just essentially the one-phase portion of it. Which is, you know, doing the survey work, doing the design work, doing that kind of, and then, and then you would apply for another one for Phase Two, which is construction. So I ended up doing that. But the comments that came back is that we have to work on Phase Two, too. So I'm like, well, you know, I'm getting advice from one side and taking it, and getting FEMA's response. And now I'm like, well, I don't even know what I'm, I said, well, let's just pull it.
And so this grant then would actually help with culverts? You know, anything that's been identified as far as issues on West Mountain or other roadways that have been impacted by fire?
For the four corners.
It's for the four corners, okay.
So it was two years ago?
So I ended up just identifying the three culverts. In the original request, it was four, but there was no confirmation of the fourth one. I just resubmitted and just said, we're going for three.
And then Juan came in this morning, I'm going to let you kind of take over, but basically, we can go with outside contractors to do that work, even the design work. So, and it was $270,000 grant? Remember the amount?
I don't remember the specifics of the.
Close to that. $40,000.
It's up there.
It doesn't do all of it, but it does a fair portion, and we, we would have to, you know, have matching ones.
So you want to give your side?
Sure. So again, I'm going to say that I am just the messenger.
Messenger?
I spent a lot of time with Susan last week at the preparedness conference. Her concern, she had some concerns that we weren't going to ask for the funding because the original hazards mitigation program or project grant was specific to the two fire management assistant grants that were given that year. So one was in Blaine County, one was in Valley County. So we get first dibs at that funding. And whatever's remainder, or if we don't decide, then they'll put that back in the pot, and they'll let the entire state go for that one point some million dollars that were awarded. So that was a concern. The other concern was, we're ready to the point where we're, once you start getting information and questions from FEMA, you're on the last leg of them giving you, you answer the questions, and they'll give you the funding. So there is all kinds of avenues that they can take. So Susan is very good at figuring out what FEMA's asking and tries to make it as easy as possible. I know, you know, that when we're dealing with FEMA and granting for any project or even reimbursements, it is extremely difficult because they make it that way. Because they have all these little boxes they have to fill on the FEMA side. So it is cumbersome. I agree, it's cumbersome. So my stake in the game is only that, that Susan is concerned because we are currently, based on the direction given to me by Commissioner Mopkin, we are looking for funding mechanisms, not only for the four corners fire, but all of the fires that we had that could potentially affect roadways, homes, subdivisions, those types of things, recreational areas, waterways. We're looking for funding for all of the fires. And if we're not going to pursue one right now, that may reflect on granting in the future. Now, I am continuing to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Silver Jackets and the state and FEMA Region 10. I did talk to Mr. Nunn, who's the director of FEMA. They want to make sure that we're, we're getting the, everybody in place and having these conversations so that they can figure out what funding mechanisms are available. Now, I went over a little bit this morning, too, that the majority of our areas for this new set of fires was in the yellow, which is a pretty, you know, minimal, mild concerns about runoff, especially debris runoff. But there's still concern there. So any funding we can get, you know, that we can be competitive for, I want to make sure we have everything in the row. That's my only concern with this. I don't have a stake in the game whether the road department feels they can do this or not. That's up to them, that's up to the grant writer. That's not my lane. I don't want to get in that lane. I don't, I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes. And I just relaying a message from Susan saying, there's many things. We can do two phases, we can do one phase. We can hire a project manager, so the road department doesn't have to do that, which has worked really well with the city of Cascades. They've done that with a couple of their grants through BRIC. And it's, they're utilizing every avenue that's given to them from Idaho's management to get these grants. The, the studies can all be part of that first phase. The hydrology and environmental studies can be part of the first phase. These are all things that are coming from IOEM that she wanted me to relay. Now, we already did put the email in to that withdrawal, but she's holding that until after this conversation to determine what you guys want to do. And if you still want to pursue that, that's fine. I'd just call her and say, hey, we're still pursuing withdrawing the HMP grant for the four corners, so.
So let me ask you on the four corners, was there any in the red? This is a fire from two years ago. We're not talking about anything that happened last year.
Right. So.
We talked about three or four culverts on one.
Three or four culverts that we're looking to oversize because of the potential level we're having now. We have the other fire that's budding up against it, could add to the potential. It really didn't, it's still yellow. It's just, those were some areas that the road department felt, if we're going to get funding, that's the area we need to, we need to work on. When, when we originally started this with McKenzie, before she left, with, when we had IOEM come up, which was Jared, who's a disaster recovery specialist, that went over, okay, here's the project, here's what you can utilize it for. It meets the all hazards mitigation plan narrative for oversizing culverts throughout the county. For that particular fire, we can afford these fire grant funding monies to that particular region. Now, I, like I said, I don't have a stake in the game. I, I, I don't, it doesn't matter to me what you guys decide. I'm just here for a point of clarification on, on what needs to be done. I'm not trying to step on your toes, Dan, or anything. It's just, I don't know if I need to be in the loop. I just got put in the loop, so I'm just relaying IOEM's concern. And like I said, I am being tasked, and I have been tasked since fire day one of, we need to look at mitigation dollars to continue rehab efforts for any of the fires that we have, or fire scars that we have to maintain.
And Dan, you know, as far as, I can see where you're coming from. You're brand new on the job. We don't have a grant writer that's just throwing it to you at work. I understand that. Didn't we budget for the match for this grant as well?
I'm sure we did.
So we're, we're ready to go. Whether or not you guys could do the work is, doesn't matter. We could contract that out.
Yep.
Biggest part, I think, is this first phase, the study part.
Yep.
What's your recommendation there? Is there somebody that can do all that for us? Or have we already done?
Well, I think it needs to be clarified because the information that we received from FEMA is they won't have us answer Phase Two questions. And I'm getting, this is where I get, well, I don't know, I'm getting direction, which I thought I was getting, you know, good advice, you know, from Susan. And I'm sure she was giving me what was, you know, what she thought was the best for the project as a whole, to move it forward, which I, I perfectly, I thank her for that because it was a lot of questions for Phase Two as well, so.
So Phase Two, so this is, this is where I've come from. First of all, I also understand you were new to the job, but I think that you need to involve Juan in anything that is emergency related. He is our emergency manager for the county and has information that, you know, we need to have a cohesive conversation between you, the grant writer, and Juan, if we ever do anything moving forward. But secondly, I do think that if there is funding out there, West Mountain's a mess. West Mountain's been a mess for a long time. And the potential of fire hazard there in the future remains. And so anything that we can identify, even in the Phase Two for construction purposes that needs to be upgraded there, I think we need to do that. And if it doesn't negate the other grant you went after, you can use both of them, if we can use both of them. You know, why not try and repair those culverts? Fix a little bit of roadway around the area that needs to be repaired. These are grant funding that's out there for us. And I certainly think we don't want to impact anything moving forward where we would put ourselves at risk of receiving these grants in the future. We have identified all this through the all hazard mitigation program, and this is an area that needs attention in any way. And we have no funding source other than these grants to do this work. So that's my opinion.
Well, and I think her strong statement there is that, as Juan said earlier, that if we drop this one, it's really going to hurt us down the road for future ones. So I'm hoping that maybe you guys can revive this when Ken gets back. He theoretically should be doing a lot of that Phase Two stuff for FEMA and take that load off of you. And then let's, if we get the grant, then let's look at, okay, do we have time to do this, or can we contract it out?
Yeah, no, I, I, however you guys feel.
You guys are going to do the work.
I, I think, but.
It's in your lap, so.
But the, but the thing is, is that I just want a clear direction of the questions. And I just, I didn't feel like I got that on the last round.
Yeah, and you know, and the fires that come off federal land, it comes down to us, and we got to deal with it.
Yep.
So that's why we. So that's why we need to, you know, stay on top of this FEMA grant and, and make it happen somehow.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. I feel really good about, you know, the grant part of it. It's just the, I'm not getting clear direction.
Sure.
And that's what was frustrating. Maybe that's when I should, should, should ask our e- expert here because I'm like, well shit, I, I don't have time to go through this in the, the third round.
And with Ken back on board, Juan helping, I think you guys can figure it out pretty quick.
I think we need to move forward and go ahead and finish this grant.
We good?
Yeah, I'll make calls today and I'll make sure when Ken gets back, we have a conversation.
But Gabby, do you want to use that?
Just to facilitate her in it, to make sure I have the right people at the table. So we can get Susan here. I can get Jared here. We can go through the whole thing again from start over.
And get some help from IOEM in answering those questions.
I can get the disaster recovery specialist Jared Dick here, uh, to go over how that works. And if we have to, we can get Matt McCumber here as well to, to help us through this process.
Cool.
Perfect.
Thank you guys. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five minute, right Gabby, can you mute us please?
You're going to be off today.
Can you welcome back everybody? We're a nine oh five agenda.
Have a good day.
A little bit late. This is an accident. These are claims, board orders in junior college. I didn't see any junior college, Rita.
No junior college.
Okay, so a little bit of other questions?
I didn't see anything. Right, I had emailed you last week. I will do another reimbursement for the second half of my reimbursement stuff. See my email?
I, I got the first one, then you sent one for hotel. That did not get paid on this claims because it came in after I was done filling all those out.
I'll do a different reimbursement.
Okay, any more questions for Rita? Not an entertaining motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approved the claims board orders and no, no junior college.
Move in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. It's in the claims?
It's in the claims, yeah.
We're older, I'm not certain much.
He takes his glasses off, nobody knows who he is.
I didn't know who he was. I was looking at him going, okay, what's different?
I got a lot of that church yesterday. It's funny, I had a dog bite me when I was six, six years, something like that. And you can still see the scar. Totally laid my whole lip open.
We agreed, yeah. We approved, uh, one more year at Doug's recommendation.
It's never one way.
So Hannah's still working on the financial policy. There's a few things that we're still working on with them.
Really on this stroke, uh, invoice is this, read two in the contract.
I believe it is. You know what? Uh, Douglas gave me that and, uh, told me I had specific things we had to look for when those bills come.
He's hiring, he's hiring staff now. Oh, no, this is for metals. It's all for steel. Okay.
Cold in here, you guys. It's a little cool in here.
Feels awesome.
Will you pick that up just a little bit? I don't know if we're getting that up here or not.
Is he here working?
Okay, where are we at now? I think we're getting heat out of this little room here too.
Nothing jumped in here. The furnace running in that little room.
So we're going to move on down our next agenda. Agenda item is department heads. And I got a couple of emails for folks that aren't going to be here and I think in that was one of them.
And that, and Jeremy.
And Jeremy.
And that's gone.
So we'll go right into court services. DeeDee, good morning.
Good morning. I'm happy almost holidays. Sitting there. Um, quick follow ups, just a little explanation. So next week, no, the next commissioner's meeting, Jacques will be here in my stead. I'll be on vacation. Uh, I did send an email to you guys only because I kept forgetting. And so publicly I'll declare that we did have a juvenile in detention for four days. It was after a sentencing, so it was a consequence, consistent non-compliance while I was pending a case. So. Um.
So DeeDee, when he's in detention, does he see down in the valley?
Yes. Yep, it was, he's already spent it. He's, I was already back out in the community. It happened at the beginning of the month.
Ada County or Canyon County, where'd you go? So those bills will be coming.
Yes. Our, uh, intern has completed their time. We always tease and called him the mole. He's done. It was a great experience. Uh, we appreciate him very much. Uh, I have like a stack of all of his notes that he took the entire time. So at some point I'll look at them just to see someone else's experience with us, you know? But it was great. It was fun. And then the rest is just going to be meetings over the next few weeks. I have my admin tomorrow, administrator's meeting, uh, and then juvenile justice council. And I kind of made a, my little list here is just to further explain why I, I'm on these meetings. Um, truly being a, a director, you only get more meetings, it seems. I'm sure you guys also understand that. But I choose the meetings that, uh, are going to definitely bring stuff back to our community or influence it in some way. Of course, the knowledge without, throughout the whole state is always beneficial. So of course the admins building, or admins is about that. But I'm also connected with them for the Idaho Juvenile Justice Association Conference. Bring all them together as well as within our conference. And, uh, the reintegration, the reintegration is with the Department of Juvenile Corrections for those kids that are coming out. We actually have a juvenile going to be coming into our community from actually Ada County. The parents moved up here while the juvenile was in Department of Juvenile Corrections custody. And so to be able to link all of the resources they had had at Ada and then into the Department of Juvenile Corrections and now into our rural community, to be able to have a language that scopes all that, I definitely want to be a part of. So I'm a chair of that committee, um, to be able to, uh, influence that in some way before I am out of this, uh, career.
Was that individual becoming in our school system too?
Uh, yes, I did think of his age. Yes. I'm also the juvenile justice council, which I'll have on Friday afternoon. Uh, all that is about, uh, bringing all those that are within our region, that'd be Boise County, Elmore County, Ada County, um, and making a commitment to move forward on, uh, three-year plans to be able to, uh, assist juvenile whatevers, treatments. Um, uh, data collection, uh, processes and changes and how things are done within our community. I chair that committee and we get money usually d- dropped down from the juvenile justice commission. Uh, and I, that was who took me to Washington DC recently. Uh, and actually during that time was able to connect up with some of the folks on the commission. And one of the gentlemen are going to do a for, is being requested, he hasn't come up yet, but it's going to, it's being requested by the McCall Police Department to do a training with them on how to respond and work with juvenile offenders or juveniles that are having an issue in the community. Uh, cause truly a lot of law enforcement patrol, they don't get a lot of training on how to work with juveniles. Um, when they're escalating, when they're, um, uh, juveniles aren't always a ray of sunshine when you tell them to sit down, be quiet. And so to be able to still be able to do your job.
Understand that.
Yes. Uh, and maintain security and safety by law, with law enforcement in the field, to get them to sit down and be quiet. It's funny how that can take some time and some training to be able to do, especially if you throw in developmental delay that you don't see on their face. Mental health illnesses that you don't see on their face. Um, and so this gentleman's going to come up and, uh, uh, do a training for McCall. Um, sometime in the spring. So, uh, I left the sheriff's office.
Does that include use of force?
Excuse me?
Use of force. Is that part of the training?
It is not. No, it's all about really how to respond and talk and communicate with kids. Um, on every level. So this gentleman, uh, has been in the business for thirty plus years, worked with, uh, pals down in, um, the police activities leagues, has been doing mentoring programs through Canyon County for twenty-five years. There's actually a judge down there that said, that made a bet with this guy that he would not retire only when the other guy was done because he was such an asset to that community and working with the high-risk offenders and violent offenders. Um, and is nationally recognized for his information. So I'm really excited to bring him. So those are the, just, just a, just a quick, that's the meetings I'm involved in and why is what I can bring back to our little community. Hopefully free of charge, but also in other ways where people bring us money so that we can do more within our community.
Good job.
Excellent.
And it's cram the van shopping time. So I'll be down there doing cram the van shopping.
Oh, I thought you got that all done.
Not yet. I hope it'll be this week because then cram the van is, um, the distributing is next Wednesday. So, uh, the vans will be at Ridley's this weekend.
I tried to give a check and I could never get to the emergency management thing. So I'm going to grab a check really quick and give to you.
Oh, thank you.
So make it out to.
Uh, well, cram the van, our Yak, uh, with cram the van on it. So Youth Advocacy Coalition. Cause that's the account it goes in. Everyone knows she's giving me a check for the Youth Advocacy Coalition.
Well, it's all on YTV, so it's, we're not worried about it.
Okay.
How's, uh, how's our new employee working out, Nikki?
Oh, she's great.
Is she?
Yep. She's gonna be going to post next in January.
Um, yeah. If there's anything different on camera. Might be a person that I'll introduce you, Mr. Deal.
Long, long time.
Well, she was written up, sir, so.
Yeah, right.
Uh, she's great.
Super triple probation right now.
Yep.
That was good to hear.
You make me laugh. There, I'll touch you, ma'am. You guys go ahead. I'll be right back.
Okay, anything else, DeeDee?
Thank you.
Uh, Melissa, you're up next.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I am up to just a goals and responsibilities statement for, uh, I guess my annual reporting with the university. A summary of past studies. I have some studies that I need to essentially analyze that are sitting on my desk waiting for the opportunity. So this is kind of the season to hopefully get caught up with them. I need to write some impact statements. I continue to work with the food coalition, the creative district, and then I'll be meeting with the BSQ, the economic development council, Commissioner Mopkin, to talk about the resiliency plan. Um, and try to see where the crossover with the natural resource planning effort would be and how extension would fit into that. Uh, 4H is continuing to do the after-school programs. They had a new, new leaders training last week. And I will be out of the office the twentieth to the third. There's a good two, two-week window that the university closes down and they encourage the staff to take time off during that time. And so I encourage the county staff to take annual leave during that time, but I don't require it because the county is still open. Um, so they might be taking some time during that timeframe as well. And I can just communicate that via email. Um, especially if our office will be closed, you know, on any, any given day, I'll, I'll make sure to communicate that.
Yeah, you could probably get with McKenzie to make sure it gets on the webpage too.
Any questions?
Um, well, was it last week we did your summation? One of the things that we never talked about with this new egg protection zone. That is something that you can keep in the back of your mind to help promote members that you meet throughout the valley in small.
Yeah, um, I've, I, I know a little bit about that. I don't know a lot, but I did connect with Valley Smiling Water with a suggestion on who might be on that board.
We actually have moved quite along with the Cindis, done a tremendous amount of work. We're about to finalize all of that today.
Okay.
Including the board members and.
I can shoot Cindy.
The ordinance, the whole nine yards is going to happen this afternoon at two, if you want to.
Okay.
Go back and listen.
Yeah, I'll check, make sure I don't have any other things scheduled, but I will come back at two o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, human resources, you're Savoy. Is that how you say it?
It is.
Savoy.
Savoy, that's the Americanized, uh, pronunciation. The French is savoie.
Savoie, that's what.
Every now and again, somebody will pronounce it that way. I'm like.
Swallow and diminere?
We're, exactly.
Good to know.
It is. It's where the name comes from.
You're Savoie kind of guy?
Yeah, it's in the blood.
We're on a roll today.
Oh, we are.
Have some fun now.
Just want to give you a quick staffing update on some things going on right now. Um, last week we hired a new driver's license clerk for the sheriff's office. She started. Tomorrow, we're starting a new civil clerk for the sheriff's office as well. Uh, and then a week from today, I just got word they are hiring another nine-one-one dispatcher, uh, starting over there. So we've still got a number of applications coming in for the few remaining positions that they have available in the sheriff's office. Good quality candidates, uh, so very encouraging there. The road department let me know that they have extended an offer to another road technician who will be starting early January. Uh, he's coming to us from, oh, I think he might've been working in either Canyon County for their road department or Owayhee County, but he comes with a great deal of experience. So he'll be, uh, literally hitting the ground running.
ADL and everything.
Everything, so.
He's got housing?
Pardon me?
He's got housing?
Uh, he is, does have housing. He, uh, is in council actually. Um, and, uh, funny enough, he's actually closer to McCall from council than he would be if he was living in Cascade. So uh, we're excited to have him coming on board with us. Um, that's really about it that I've got. I do need to get with you just for a quick in-your-ear moment sometime today to let you know of an event that took place over the weekend. Um, but other than that, that's what's going on.
When do you want to do that?
We have the housing filled. Was a decision made.
We do, yes. We were able to find, uh, one of our employees in. We do, yes, we were able to find, uh, one of our employees in uh, in the county has signed the lease with us and has, I believe will be taking occupancy this week with it.
I think we probably had time closer to.
Yeah, I need one minute of your time.
Yeah, right, right for lights coming.
Yep, perfect, alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did think, uh, when we approved the agenda this morning, I forgot to note that that three fifteen has been postponed, so we will not have our three fifteens afternoon.
Oh yeah, I saw that. Police management things.
Okay, we're gonna keep right on going, the next one up is cherries out, so it's Cindy. Good morning.
Good morning. So, the action item is, you saw the postcard we wanna send out. I will have to get the list together, I was thinking um, about sending it to the people we sent it to before on West Mountain. And then the other fires, any private properties below those, we'll kind of find those people.
What do those postcards actually do?
It just gives them a heads up, gives them um, a warning that if there's a mudslide that takes out your house, that's considered a flood.
Post fire stuff.
Right, post fire. Yep, that, that's a flood and not a something else. And so you have to have flood insurance. And then my favorite part besides that, cause that's what we had done before, is um, giving them ideas of how to protect their property, like reseeding, uh, planting grass to prevent spread of noxious weeds and some other things they can actually do on their properties.
The other thought I had was, you know, if you're interested in wildfire mitigation in Kalmarra, that might be a good, if you're mailing it anyway, you know, could we hit maybe that topic also?
Cindy, do you have any idea about how many postcards you're gonna have?
No, I don't.
Do you have in your budget for the postage?
Um.
Does that come from general fund?
That would come from general fund.
Just what I'm.
Board order type of thing, Mackenzie puts together the postcard and we have to get her the list of addresses. I think this is great.
Motion to approve.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the, what is it called? Approve floods after fire postcards or what is it, floods after fires postcards?
Second.
No, design to approve the postcards for after fire floods. All bear, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We did talk to Juan and Cindy about, you know, bear reports and there is minimal risk for anything, but you might ask him if there's specific area that he thinks. He said there was one little red area right by Willow Creek, so that might be the only area to kinda highlight, but.
So do you want me to do all of West Mountain or do you want me only to do those things that might be at risk?
Well, I would certainly look at the people on the drainages first. All those little creeks that come down through there, cause that's where the impact will be. It's the mud coming off the top, right down the creek and across the road.
Or if the soil gets saturated and sloughs off.
Yeah.
Would Juan be somebody she gotta connect with?
GIS could help.
Just feel like Juan would probably have the best information on where the drainages are that might be most at risk.
We heard this morning a little bit about Willow Creek drainage, so that would be one that would scorch pretty, pretty hard up high.
Okay, I will ask Juan where he advises us to send the postcard and we'll just go with that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we have a number of plats wrapping up final plats, I think large, you know, some amendments to the Tammerack Village and some two and three lots and.
Those are coming next week, I think, if I saw the agenda earlier.
There's two coming next week and we've got two more sitting there that we're, we're trying to finalize.
Cindy, what's gonna happen with, we had, we've had a lot of questions on the Tammerack um, expansion. You know, what was in the original CUP or PUD on like West Mountain Road? Um, I think we need to sit down and kinda highlight what we can expect with this new eight hundred acres that they have. Back with the DEQ property that they took. There were some conversations, we just did an MOU with them about grading the road once a day during ski season. And I just don't have clarity on what the requirements are for them.
Okay, um, the heritage area, which is the portion that they just required from DEQ, um, has been approved. Um, and there's a capital contribution agreement. Capital contribution agreement requires that when you go into those phases, um, you take a look at the mitigation that's gonna be required for those impacts.
So with the change in ownership in the middle of that, is, did that change the PUD at all?
Approvals go with the land and not with owner. So it's, it's still the same planned unit development. It's just that, you know, someone took ownership for a while and now it's back with them. So, but if they make, you know, some major amendments to that, then they'll have to go back through the process. Right now, they're coming in for uh, different CUPs for things that weren't previously platted preliminarily. They had an approved preliminary plat at, at the um, onset of this.
Be interesting, I don't know if you have an interest or not, if not, I can just sit down with you. But, you know, getting just some highlighted bullet points on what we can expect with this new section. And I mean, the PUD was so long ago, I don't, I don't know what their requirements are. I know there's some requirements there on the S bridge, but I don't know what the rest of the requirements are for infrastructure improvements.
I can ask Scott to come in and do a presentation.
That'd be awesome, have him come in.
It's been, I don't think he's been in since last year. It was his last update.
I would wait till Catlin is on and then do it when she's here.
Don't wanna hear that.
And then everybody's up to speed at the same time. The other part of that equation is to look at what you're gonna expect from them with this additional Chalka Ground to the south, if there's gonna be any private development or ski runs or any of that stuff, just to get a general idea of what that's gonna entail down the road too.
Yeah, the heritage section was already um, considered. The hill wasn't considered, that's the forest.
An update from him on where he's at with that project would be helpful.
I'll see when he can be here in January or February.
Might give Catlin a couple of weeks, might have a lot going on for the first couple of.
Well, I'm here until the thirteenth, so I would schedule it after that.
Okay, um, I do have a potential PNZ commissioner candidate scheduled for an interview, uh, December twenty-third, very excited.
Any, any background with any kind of planning tools or anything?
Well, um, he informed me of what all of our issues are.
Great, coming in with.
So he's.
So he's, he's been paying, paying attention.
So he's paying attention to what's going on in Valley County. He retired uh, from Micron and has been doing his own little business up here for a while. Um, but no, he was very aware of the current challenges in Valley County. That's probably one of the biggest obstacles.
So far, he's the only one that's put his name in.
Well, one that's qualified.
Right. There's been a few people talk to me about it, but I think they realize that it's more time than they are willing to commit.
And this gentleman is retired, so we'll probably have some time to do it. We'll see, we'll see what you do on December twenty-third.
He'll send his application, everything over before that?
So you're gonna have a big party and cake and everything on the thirteenth?
No.
Thirteenth?
Nothing, nothing, I don't want.
His last day. Oh, January thirteenth?
No, no, no.
Yeah, January thirteenth.
I don't wanna party, you guys. Fade away like the sun.
I'm gonna, when I retire, they can have a party and I just won't show up. I wanna party in Vegas. Do you have anything for me? I, oh, uh, Neil, you had asked about that parking in the right of way and we have contacted them, the new owners.
Thank you.
Okay, see you later on.
Yes.
Might be my job. Mr. Laxson.
Morning.
Good morning. So what do you wanna do, your action item, do you wanna tell us what's going on?
You know, we can do action item right now.
Hey, this is master challenge agreement with the State of Idaho Parks and Rec for all the counties?
Uh, for all the counties and both Region One and Region Four. And it has been worked on for seven years now, and I am willing to take odds on when it'll all get signed.
I have some questions for you before you leave that.
I'm, I'm just gonna break it up and.
Worked on it for seven years?
When was the last time we did this?
Seven years ago.
So in the agreement, there's a few things that we are agreeing to. Keep the maintenance and repair of the OSV grooming implements and accessories current. And it says, provide the department with an OSV use and maintenance report by the tenth of each month of the previous month's use. Are we doing that?
Yes, we are.
And then we're carrying all the liability, physical damage and comprehensive insurance on it? I think that were my main questions.
This is re-done every seven years?
Supposed to be done every five years.
Five.
Yeah, and, and the tough part was that they had to have one for each different ranger. And it was just to the point, you know, they'd want different things, will they finally have one agreement for both regions? I'm gonna be curious, see if they get every, every commissioner to sign on.
Well, this is really interesting because Benowa, Bonner, Clearwater, Idaho, Cootney, Leita, Nisper, Shoshone, Bannock, Bear Lake, Bonneville, Fremont, Limhi, Madison, Blaine, Boise, Camas, Elmore, Twin Falls and us.
Oh my.
County's not in this, so.
They're all the ones that have bona fide grooming programs and so far, Twin Falls has signed and then it would be us, we're the only ones.
So I would bet that they'll get them signed pretty quickly, cause if you want funding, you're gonna sign this agreement.
I don't think that would be a bad comment to make.
I, I think they'll get it signed fairly.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve this master agreement.
I'll make motion that we approve the master challenge cost share agreement.
Okay.
Second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
And as you guys know, I've always really appreciated when they put cost share down cause it basically means, you'll notice there's always a line below cost share as the monies are available and there's never any money available, so we do all the sharing, basically. Um, I had a really good meeting with Emmett District Ranger last week and we came doing a great, because we've got all the problems down there and so this has been put in the statesman and the Star News, six fifty-three road is gonna be closed cause of a bridge. Uh, six twenty-four, six twenty-six, cause of road damage, and I have looked at that road damage, it's, it's bad, thank you. And the six eighteen because of the bridge. But let's always keep in mind, all these are low elevation. And there's quite a few times we haven't been able to groom them because we haven't had any snow at low elevation. And I really appreciated uh, the district ranger coming in saying, you know what? I found this circle over here on these roads, if we get enough snow, you guys can go ahead and groom that. And that's huge for the Forest Service to come in with, with solutions and bring to the.
Just to let you know, Larry, I've also reached out to the congressional delegation and asked for their support for funding for the fires mitigation. And I've also asked them to support the formation of the rack. I have culture's office on the completing that formation of the rack.
I think um, it's, the, the whole rack discussion is, I mean, it's just not us that are frustrated. The Forest Service is frustrated over the rack thing too. It's, it's a tough mess, it really is.
Larry, before you move on, can you give me the name of that district ranger from Emmett that gave you the permission?
I would love to, and I was gonna tell it to you and I forgot to write it down. I'll send it to you soon as I get back to my office.
Thank you.
Yes, oh, absolutely, good guy. Um, I'm working with Yasha in the Castle District because we've got roads over there that uh, we're gonna have some logging on. They feel they'll be done with them by the end of December and again, it's low elevation. Um, I don't think we'll have issues, but I, I appreciated Yasha coming to us and explaining what the issues are and how we can work with the loggers and stuff like that, so that's, that's worked really well.
Larry, if you look out the window, winter, winter has started today.
I'm not looking out the window right now. Uh, it's, it's uh, it's been a tough start, we've had so far this weekend, we had three vehicles stuck on Anderson Creek. We've got a trailer that's still sitting on no business, uh, that was been left up there. Um, we've had, uh, there's a truck that's sitting sideways up, uh, almost up to the summit, uh, CSAT Summit. First, we put posts, poles around there, but we had to pull off going up Anderson Creek. They had such a mess going up there, I told, I asked Ray to pull off and he came back down. We'll go up today and try to clean that mess up. Hopefully, they've gotten their, their vehicles off the road. Um.
It's not even open anymore, is it?
It's not open to trucks, but they don't say, do I, Ray asked the one guy, said, you read the sign? He said, yeah, but I thought it was okay. I just.
So Larry, is there any kind of a fee? I mean, if we have to go out and remove them?
There should be a fee and they should receive a, a citation. We did call into, um, into dispatch and let them know that those were there. And that's as far as we go. The only other thing we'll do is if, if they're in a position where they're gonna cause danger to a snowmobiler or anybody else, we will pull that, that vehicle off the side and leave it on the side and put poles around it, we, we don't pull them out.
So do, is there within our ordinance, a citation and a fee?
There, I think there is, I know that we close it by citation, all, all of these roads are closed um, for grooming. And as I remember, I think it was like seventy-five dollars or some real minimal amount, but.
Should make sure that on our signs, there is a fee, so people know that, you know, they may be risking a fee if they decide to make that decision.
We will add that to the sign.
Didn't we also ask one year to put the ordinance on the sign?
Yes, yeah, and most of those are, some of them are, as Danny or I are, actually after this meeting are gonna go out and replace some signs.
Minimum fee is ridiculous, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's, it, it costs a lot more than that, by the time they get somebody to come tow them off of there and it costs us uh, quite a bit of money, fuel and to clean up those, the trail systems.
Oh, exactly.
Will you check that out and report back?
I will.
What we have there?
I will do that. Uh, let's see, we've also had two sleds that burned down to the ground, uh, there's big black spots in the middle of the.
Saw that.
And then we've had one UTV that went out on Goose Lake and they broke through the ice and went to the bottom of the lake. Had to get a, a vehicle out there to tow that guy off. But other than that, we're doing really well. Yes, and, and you guys know, we've all been doing it long enough, every beginning of the season and New Year's. New Year's is gonna be one that everybody's truck can go farther than anybody else, so they're gonna head up the road. You guys got any other questions for me?
Pretty good.
Um, one question. So you had your perks, uh, our advisory committee send a letter on a new application that is in front of planning and zoning. Is that a discussion at the council, what, where is that?
Say, say that one more time.
You had a letter submitted from the advisory council.
Okay.
On an upcoming planning and zoning issue.
Oh, that was the, the, yeah, the recreational advisory board. Um, that was not a discussion that I was involved in, I did see that they sent a letter in.
Was that on an agenda, I mean, is that coming from the board, your knowledge, or?
The way, the way I read it, it was, but like I said, I was not at a meeting when that discussion took place.
You may put that on an agenda for discussion, because.
I will do that.
To receive something like that, it does need to be with a full board and a vote of the board so that we don't get into, again, another advisory committee making recommendations and discussions on things that aren't.
Right, and, and as we remember, uh, neither Dave or I are members of that board, we're advisory only.
Yeah, you're not voting members.
I was at that last meeting, nothing was said about that, so that letter came in, cause I read that. It was in between.
In between meetings.
It was in between meetings and somebody sent that out and I read that and it's like, yeah, that sounded inappropriate.
That's kind of the where I came to, I'm kinda waiting for our next meeting so we can have that discussion.
Yeah, they shouldn't have been sending that out.
Right.
The whole boards, that was inappropriate.
And I just wanna make sure that, yeah, we have that conversation with them so they understand what the requirements are.
Alright, we'll do that.
Alright, thank you.
Looks beautiful out there, doesn't it?
It's coming. Everybody gonna keep running going? Wildfire mitigation, Mara, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I have an action item.
West Hazard?
Yes, uh, reimbursement for West Hazard. So this is the final reimbursement.
Final one, huh?
Yep, final one.
Two thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Yep.
Get it?
Nice. Yep. Oh, I would move that we approve the, um, West Hazard reimbursement request. And I don't have that amount in front of me, so...
Hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. And you'll write a letter, and then we'll sign it? Is that how we do requests that, or you just write the letter?
Write the letter, yep. And I have the final reimbursement right here to...
Oh, you do? Okay. Also, I can share his motion. Any more discussion?
Um, and then, next week, I'm going to be proposing to get the CWPP signed again. Um, I have looked through all of our documentation and records, and I cannot find a signed copy from two thousand nineteen.
Let's finish voting on this before you...
We'll finish the motion.
Sorry.
We don't forget.
We got a motion, second, to request reimbursement for the, uh, West Hazard twenty, HR, HFR four Valley County contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The CW what?
So the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So it's a document that's a pendency of the All Hazard Mitigation Plan. And this is usually attached to all wildfire mitigation grants to get basically grant funding. I have asked Juan, he does not have it. Um, I've asked Stephanie, we cannot seem to find the two thousand nineteen version that was signed. Um, so this one will not be updated as of right now. I just need the previous version signed, 'cause I am planning on applying for the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, which is a large Forest Service grant, which is facilitated separately from the IDL. And the IDL's kind of grandfathered us in, 'cause the All Hazard Management or Mitigation Plan was signed. So that's what, how that's kind of worked out, um, over the years. But this one truly has to be signed. And I have a request in the clerics office right now, to see if she has a copy with Robin.
Where's your fish?
Yep, and she's looking on there, um, so it might be there, but...
Well, I have it at home.
Okay. From two thousand nineteen. So, there's not gonna be any changes from when it was signed previously, um, 'cause this, next year, we will be updating it with the All Hazard Management Plan. Um, it's just to get the document signed again, so I can attach it to this grant. Right? So, and I'll be working with Ken to apply for that grant. And we'll be presenting in a couple weeks to, uh, for my proposal, 'cause I'm up, planning on applying for a pretty large sum.
Yay!
Good, 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 good.
Twenty-one million came to somebody else, maybe we...
Yes. It won't be that high.
Bang.
And then, I'm working with the fire departments and Cindy to update the comprehensive plan. Um, she has extended us until the end of January. So I'm meeting with them tomorrow to discuss some things that they would like to get input into the comprehensive plan. Thanks. Yep.
I can't think of anything else. Guess we're good.
Perfect.
Snow, snow, snow.
No, I forgot to bring my boots. Your boots?
Your boots?
My flats. Now I'm gonna be buried in snow.
Not supposed to get much snow.
I didn't think so either, so I didn't figure it'd be impolite to wear these, but, oh, well, what I get for thinking.
Those people drive fifty mile an hour on highways, more like, are you kidding me? You couldn't get around them, you couldn't get around them.
Gotta give yourself extra time now.
I got in a fairly good groove, but it takes me, it takes me forty minutes. Yeah. Especially if it's dark, people are a little warm.
Has the ticks...
Good job.
Thank you. And I'll have a jug one coming up within the next couple weeks, too, 'cause all, all of these have to be done by the thirtieth. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We are way ahead of schedule now, so we're gonna go mute, and we'll see everyone back here at ten thirty.
I mean this morning it was sixty.
Sixty three.
And welcome back everybody.
Does it go down too low at night?
We're at our ten thirty agenda. This is buildings and grounds, Scott.
Turns out.
Morning.
One right there.
It's not on the, on anything.
Uh-oh. I think this room is just so cold, you know, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
So you want to do your action first? You want to do your?
Yeah, we can. I got a couple of them. Um, first is authority to sign. Um, I, my card's like ten thousand, but I just put seventy five hundred. That's for that.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
We also.
I'm not gonna do, you know, I'm gonna do anything. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna come talk to you guys about it anyway before I do anything. So mainly.
We are gonna come up with a policy on pre-approved vendors also. So we'll be asking for your vendor list.
Mm-hmm.
A pre-approved vendor list. So every January you will give us the vendors you think you're gonna be working with that year.
Mm-hmm.
Making sure they have all their insurance and everything in place.
Mm-hmm.
We'll come up with that policy and shoot it out, but I think seventy five hundred is a great amount. I would move that we sign the declaration of signature authority for buildings and grounds for seventy five hundred.
Give me just a second. All fair and police say aye.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. I think this vendor list she's talking about, when you get it to us, that's gonna be easier for you to just go and do work. Without having to run all this stuff through legal and it's gonna make it easier for you.
Yeah.
And you might kind of keep track or put together a vendor.
Go.
There's a lot of them, I know.
But there's one that we, you know, we're using like right now. We have a page up here that going through or the heat pumps that are heating the last month and stuff. So it's Gabby. Are you signing for Doug today?
Yes.
Okay, great list. Ingenious.
Okay, and the second one is we're, uh, we're engineering. Looking at biggest thing on, on our, our transfer site, trying to work on is to take it down to work on it. You know, and it's just the volume we got. So we've been scratching our heads and scratching our heads. What we're looking at doing is possibly go, or is going up on, on the upper deck and that'd be who we're C and D and the metals kinda clear that and pave a spot. And put, um, the eco blocks around it and we'll, we'll have to route the people up there, have to go off the scales and, and go up there. And then they'll have to dump and, and, you know, actually we'll have to load it from there till we can. Cause to do the scale work and stuff we wanna do in the lower pit where they, where they load the trucks and drainage there is gonna be down a month or so.
The biggest issue you'll have to watch for is wind.
Yeah.
If the wind starts blowing trash around, that'll cost some more work. So make sure you keep that in back of your mind.
Yeah. But I mean, there's, there's basically no way to work on that building.
Why not?
You know, volume is, is, is so high there. Um. So this is the solution so far that we've come up with. So this is for the additional engineering to, uh, to have a Great West engineer a site and stuff up there for us and things is what this one is.
When do you think what we could use that slab of pavement for?
Well, that's what, well, it's gonna be, yeah, I think we're gonna add to an asphalt is what we're gonna do up there.
And then tear it down.
I don't know, you know.
What can we use it for?
Leaving up there for now or, you know, see what we can, can do with it. If we wanna do any expansion up there or do something. You know, whatever direction.
What are you thinking of on the north side of the Woody degree where that hill starts up somewhere there? Is that where you're thinking?
No, I probably think down past the Woody degree kind of where the C and D.
Okay.
And the metal pile is kind of that area there. It's gonna clean it up. Um, look at something we can like bring people up. They can kinda make a loop and come in there and, um, Lake Forks is gonna have to see. Maybe get a bigger excavator or something to go over the side, you know, load their trucks cause they won't have that lower pit. But it's just something we're all gonna have to just kinda grin and bear it for a month or so while we're doing the work there.
Oh, you're just gonna set up blocks, what, ten foot tall?
Yeah, set up some eco blocks, you know, kind of a three-sided, you know, kinda stair pipe, you know, and so they can, and push it up in there and then see how we can load, you know, if it's something we can load over the blocks or something, you know, um, we're gonna have to, like I said, they're gonna try to engineer something that we can do. Cause it's just.
So you're, you're talking about load the actual trucks.
Yeah, they're gonna dump up there, you know, the constituents are gonna dump up there and then they're gonna have to load from up there too.
Oh, wow.
Cause we just, we can't work on that pit down there. Really can't work on the building hardly. I mean, to take one bay down in the summer, our busiest time of the year, you know, the time of the year we can pour concrete without.
That'd be a disaster.
And, you know, if you look at what they're, um, need to send them to you, cause the prints are about fifty percent done on the, on work on the builder. But there's a lot of internal red iron, not just around the front doors that needs to be kinda replaced and, and done in there. It's just been damaged over the years, just cramming the stuff in there.
So the best way is just to ban into place, set up that up on top and load them all from up there.
Yeah, for, you know, until construction, you know.
Construction gets through.
The Z wall stuff, we can probably keep, you know, working down there. But when we start trying to, you know, put a scale in the, or replace the, you know, existing non-functional scale there. So they're not coming out, getting into the traffic flow weighing and, you know, taking some off and weighing or putting some more back on. That way they can load to have a read right there. They know what they're done is, you know, get it out of there. Um. And the pit will drain back that way too.
Need to get this done while you're still here. You have all of the expertise at this point. We need to try and get as much of this done.
Get it done by October next year.
Exactly. Let's, let's.
September one, your last day?
What?
September one, your last day?
Oh, I don't know. My middle of Septen, or middle of October or something. We'll see. I wanted to go through the budget year and, and that's what we gotta look at for, you know, to hire a replacement. We need to hire him two months, three months prior.
Sure.
Um, so they can really, cause it just, it keeps, it just seems that more and more keeps coming and stuff.
So Scott, this sixty-one thousand you're asking for now? I thought it was to go towards that bottom scale.
No, that's, uh, this is the engineering.
We haven't even done anything for that scale.
Well, that's included in the engineering right now.
It is? Okay. I thought that was.
Right now, right now is projected cost is two point seven million is what they're.
By fifteen. So this, this sixty-one thousand is just for engineering costs?
Yeah. Engineering is very expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I've come to find out.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion and then approve amendment number two to the professional services contract for Great West Engineering for the MRF site. Second, you got a motion in a second. All favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Plus sixty-one thousand. Additional. Day is twelve, what? Four?
Nine.
Nine. Thanks Gabby. Let me go my Christmas tree up. It's gonna be over with for a good.
Well, we're, I got Rita's out for her yesterday, but now it sucks. Yep, our house is full of Santa Clauses and snowmen and gnomes.
Rita got in the mood, huh?
Oh, she, yeah, Christmas is her thing.
Hey, you got anything else?
Um, we're, um, we're getting started on the, we had it for capital proof. We had the remodel for, uh, the entrance into the sheriff's department. So we're, um, had Dar Ripley construction come out and look at that and try to get started on that now.
And that's gonna be a secured doorway?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what it's gonna be. You're gonna come in, um, the window where Nikki's at is gonna go away. Um, we're gonna take right where the door goes in, the driver's license come across there. Put, take the door there, put it, put it in, and then have like a bulletproof, um, window for her there. Uh, we're gonna armor the walls. Um, we're gonna use, um, the old, um, vests, bulletproof vests, take the plates off it. We can use that to kinda bulletproof the walls and stuff. Um.
Good.
This is the plan on that. Um, look at taking one of the bathrooms out, um, in there since basically all of the, the staff in there used that bathroom. And, um, so create some more space in there. So we're looking at doing that too. And so it involves we're kinda splitting a sprinkler head up there. So it'll come down both sides of the wall and kinda relocating the enunci, the, the light and the horn for that and stuff. So we're getting started.
When are you gonna start that? When you propose?
Well, we, they came and looked at last week. So just see when we can get going on that.
Is that out of build or is that in your budget?
That was, uh, it's in capital improvement. So I'm not sure. I can't remember what the funding source actually is for it, if I was with you.
Um, Neil's been talking a lot and I don't think any conversation has been had about putting driver's license over here. DMV is right now, if we take them down to the Amerititle building. And I don't know if that would provide more space over there or, you know, that conversation would need to be had with.
Yeah, that's something that, yeah, I talked with the sheriff about that. We wanna kinda keep them all there together.
It's kinda up to him. If he needs more office space, that's totally their purview. They had mentioned they could use more room. So.
Yeah.
I guess just have that discussion with him.
Yeah, and I'd like us, I'd like me also to get a bid on replacing the carpet and flooring in there. Cause that, the carpet's got holes. It's, it's thrashed.
Need a lot of carpeting throughout the courthouse.
Yeah. Um, but I think that's the original in there and stuff coming back with something that's a little more durable, especially the door that the officers go in and out. Cause it gets so much tracked in at that entrance there. So they requested I get some bids to just kinda get an idea maybe for next year's capital improvement, uh, to do the floor in there. Um, we had a leak down at the Amerititle building, um, on the twenty-eighth of November. Um, it's a second floor or the, uh, downstairs women's bathroom started leaking out of the actual recessed towel dispenser. Um, I came out on a Saturday, um, I shut the water off. Um, Molly came in, let me in upstairs. We looked around there, couldn't find any leaks. Turned the water back on Monday and the leak hasn't come back. Um, but the wall, the wall is soft. I mean, push your thumb into it. Um, so I contacted Matthew up there. He contacted a plumber. And it wasn't a plumbing issue, uh, cause it didn't come back with the water. So the plumber goes, yeah, it's not plumbing issue. So they had Apex like disaster response come up. And what we've got is there's a crawl space under part of that up there. And the crawl space is down mechanical room. You get in and you can kinda crawl onto the main building and then it kinda, it has a section that goes east. And that's kinda the, the wall that runs north and south, the east wall. And it hits a corner and that corner is about where the men's room is downstairs. And then that wall is the one that runs through the bathrooms, their file room and the conference room that goes east. Um, what they found on that, uh, that, uh, east wall over there is, you know, when you, when you dig a footer out, you overdig it for the width, put the footer down there. And when it's poured, you kinda have that lower area. It's got standing water in it right now. And it's probably been a problem for a while. But somehow it found a route over to that women's bathroom and, um, started leaking. And the leak occurred when we had that huge storm that hit the west coast and, and we had the downpour here. Um. It hasn't come, you know, I mean, the water's still there. He says it's about eight inches deep. It's clear. I mean, he's got pictures of it, video of it. And stuff, but.
So we're looking at a French drain?
Well, that's something we may have to look at doing around the foundation. Um, uh, and see where, you know, that's the only spot. It's not, it's not on the, on the south end where the entrance, it's not on the west walls. Anywhere else is just that, that, uh, east wa- wall, the, uh, footing and foundation.
Regrade?
What?
Can we regrade it? And just get it to drain differently?
Um, I mean, that's kinda, um, we have to look at exactly where, you know, I'm trying to, you know, Molly gave me some prints for it now and stuff and see if it's actually that wall. We have the wide entrance and that wall. If it carries through, you know, it turns right there and then it goes downward, then it goes down the hill. Um. Just can't, you know, find a location. Right now their estimate to clean up the water, fix the sheet rock, dry out the walls about eighty-five hundred dollars. So I don't know if Ameri, if Ameritile's gonna do it or if we have to put a claim in with I-CRIP and we can do it, you know?
They're still in charge of it for now.
Okay.
So, I mean, they should be the one dealing with it. It's probably been a problem for a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's not something, you know, that, that was the opinion of the guy from AgPax. He says this is probably something that's been here for a while. It's just finally with that huge downpour we got, um, that it, you know, really pushed the water more and it.
So is there a good spot for a French drain on that side?
Well, you, you've got that side. It's all, you know, landscaped kinda around the corner of the building. So.
To grab some stuff.
Yeah. Um, I was trying to figure out, you know, the heart part is figuring where it's coming in. Is it just coming under them? Or is it cracked somewhere and, you know, freezing and cracking? If it's opened it up more now, um. But, um, yeah, he went to push his thumb on the wall and his thumb went in, in the corner of it. Luckily the trash can caught all the water.
Do you know, did the guy happen to see was it warm water?
No, you know, I don't.
We hit that down below where it drops off to the bucket. She said it was eighty-nine or eighty-seven degree water.
Yeah.
And it was deep.
Maybe we ask them to fix and repair and then we go in and put a French drain in.
Yeah.
There would be something like that where we coordinated with them.
Yeah.
Go to work.
Otherwise you're gonna get mold.
Yeah.
And what that?
And there's, I mean, he says it's spotty and there's not unusual for a crawl space, you know, with, you know, um, but you know, there is some included in there of, of spraying what's kinda down in that area. Um, like I guess I've been fortunate. Molds don't bother me. All the crawl spaces have been over the years. Cause about everyone I was in had, you know.
Especially up here. Um, well, will you work with Matthew then and try and get a resolution?
Yeah, see what they wanna do. He, he sent the, um, I'll have to go back. I mean, I, he sent it to, I asked him to send it to both of us. Cause he was gonna send it to them. And I asked to be included on it. He sent it to me and stuff. So that's kinda where I'm at on that and stuff.
You perceive any other big issues with that building as far as us moving into it? Do the heat pumps work and all that?
Yeah, they're not, they're actually not heat pumps there. Um, they're, uh, they're water to air. They, they have the boiler downstairs, um, you know, provides heat in, in the winter. And then they have a separate cooling coil. It has the lines that go out to the, um, that's right for anywhere, the condensers and stuff and compressor out, outside the building.
This has heat coils in the area and or?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it has, you know, and then it has that boiler down, downstairs. Um, that I'm trying to find the disconnect. That's one thing I was doing while he was in the crawl. Uh, cause I wasn't gonna crawl it a second time. And, uh, cause I crawled back there on Saturday and stuff. Um. I can't find the power source of that boiler. I mean, it's got like three, four inch conduits that come up to it and flex to it. And there's no disconnect. I've looked at electrical panels. Um. I gotta look at the prints and see.
Electrical disc, well, should have been.
Yeah, I mean, there should be one mounted close. You just pull it and kill it. But, um, um, it kinda, it flexes right out of that, right out of that boiler into those four inch conduits. And the three of them go down into the floor. Nothing comes up by the panels that size or anything.
Strange.
We have time to figure it out, but.
I wonder if this old boiler downstairs, which is new, would work as a replacement for that, do you know? Have you looked at that?
No.
Might wanna throw that in the back of your mind because this is not that old of a boiler. Right after we put it in, what was it? A year or two later we had explosion and all the steam pipes. We had to shut it off.
Yeah, that's why I first came in when we tried to fix that leak in the corner over here. Cause it had steamed that room. They shut up.
Just remember that's a brand new boiler.
Was it?
We could use that boiler down there now.
No, that boiler down there is, you know, I mean, that building, we just looked at two, I can't.
Thousand and five?
Yeah, so.
So it's twenty years old?
Yeah.
All that piping down there is different than what piping was here.
I hope so.
Piping here is what created the issue.
Yeah, and it's all copper. I mean, it's, it's not, this is a steam boiler. This is a, that is a hot, hot water boiler like we have up here. I mean, it provides, it provides hot water up to the coil in the, in the heater is what it does. So. So it's, it's, it's a, you know, water to air.
It's a different water pressure system.
It doesn't have the compressor in it. Cause the compressor in our heat pumps is what provides the heat, not the water.
Right.
Is what it does. Um, so, uh.
So I don't know that we approved that Great West amendment. Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, we did.
Hmm.
Yeah. Gabby, did we vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
Yep. The Great West motion, did we vote on it?
Yeah, I'm losing it.
So that's kinda where we're at right now, with stuff around here.
Can't think of anything else.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Have a good Christmas. We'll see you.
Scott, the guy with the waste stuff, he, he put that off for today, but he's gonna send a white paper. I'll make sure you get that.
Okay.
Just with all the information on the technology. Who isn't ready to publicly disclose some information that is proprietary. So.
Mm-hmm, I understand. Yeah, I, I, I'm not telling you now, uh, cause I, I don't know if they were gonna come or if they were just gonna view it. Um, I'm not quite sure. Um, I'm not quite sure, but, um.
I'll make sure you get that.
He was, uh, they were, they were like, say they were going to come or view it or something. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, our next agenda does not till eleven, so we're going to go mute and we'll see everybody at eleven. Can you hear me on?
Yep.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're eleven o'clock agenda. This is, uh, Roden Bridge. There's a lot of action items down. Just going to let you do whatever you want to do first.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Uh, so the first one on the list, this is Cascade Auto.
You missed the story on why that's not signed by the attorney's office.
Yeah, let me, I'm trying to get my, uh, documentation from me here. Uh. Is, yeah, this is, if I, uh, go back a couple of, uh, meetings ago, I mentioned in regards to, uh, vehicles that were in the process of being, um, paid for or at least started to, and then, uh, they were being shipped down to Utah. These are the, the Durangos from the, the Sheriff's Department. So this is.
Three of them on there.
This is three, uh, three Durangos, um, that didn't quite go through the full process, but, um, you know, as we had already issued the payment, they had already shipped them. So that's just where the, our process, we're in that in-between phase still. Um, and, uh, it's really for the Sheriff's Department's, uh.
Is there three that they will be buying in?
Motor pool for them, so.
And tell me why we would be buying, we also have an invoice from Mountain Home Auto Ranch.
Uh-huh.
And it's less expensive than Cascade Auto. But why are we buying from Cascade Auto versus the pre-approved vendor for the state without going out for bid?
Well, I think, uh, if you're comparing the two, one was issued back in July and this one's more current, if, if you're trying to compare them.
So if you went out to the state contractor now?
Yeah.
They would be comparable in price?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just, you're, it's very hard to compare apples to oranges because it's two different timeframes.
This would have required a bid, though.
This would have, yes, correct, uh, in, in regards to that. But it was, it's again, it's one of those things with the Sheriff's Department. Um, I think we, in the, in previous timeframe, we were talking about the, it had been approved with the CIP, so the, the purchase went out, uh, back in, I think, that July timeframe.
So you've changed the policy now that if we're going to buy over that seventy-five thousand, it has to go out for RFP?
So, you know, maybe there's more question for you, but one of the things that we don't get here is like rotation of these sheriff's vehicles. I mean, we buy a lot of, a lot of vehicles for sure. What happens to the old ones? I know we set up that you could take them to auction or you could run them into another department, but, you know, maybe it's me, I'm old fashioned, but years ago we used to think we needed two new vehicles a year for the sheriff. Now we're on three.
Three a year.
And they're wearing them out that fast.
Yeah, City of Cascade bought one of these for the contract.
The funding is coming.
Remember, none of these vehicles were cleared through the CIP. They weren't on the budget. I pushed to get three of them. They said they didn't need three of them and halfway through the year, they said they needed three.
I remember that. Well, and I think, you know, I, I'm not too concerned about how you get it bottomed. I think we got that fixed. This is one of those like dances, kind of was in between all of this stuff.
Yeah, so rolling them through, we still have a handful of pickups. Pickups work better for us. The Durangos will move into motor pool, billing department, whatever, as long as they're not wore out, but there's a good chance by the time we get them and if we don't need them, they'll go straight on the auction block.
How many are you auctioning this year, do you know?
None.
Yet.
Yet.
It just seems like, God, we're always buying these guys' cars. What, you know, where did all the old ones go?
We're getting five vehicles. We're getting five vehicles. We're getting two trucks plus three Durangos.
Well, the two trucks are for the road department.
Road.
Or road.
Okay, and those were included in the budget?
Yeah.
And one was one ton Ford?
Nope, so I'm getting two. Thing you're signing today is for two three-quarter ton Fords for the road department. The other pickup is a one ton for billings and grounds.
Well, first we've got to approve this Cascade Auto.
That's the three Durangos.
That's the three Durangos.
So can you put in your process, when you guys get these requests, that you're getting that spreadsheet that tells you how many, you know, are, are they sending you what they currently have for inventory?
We order them.
You're going to buy the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, what I'm asking for is, is I request an update every once in a while. It's a spreadsheet and it tells you exactly how many vehicles they have. It shows you, you know, what their mileage is. So we know that they're rotating through that list and only replacing that number of vehicles. I mean, I can't tell you how many vehicles we've bought since I've been here in five years and it's, you know, I, I would like it tightened a bit, too. You know, what, what is the, the policy is what, over a hundred and twenty we buy?
Well, you get to a hundred thousand, that should trigger them to start the process of being replaced because by the time we order a vehicle and get it replaced, get it outfitted, they're usually over a hundred and twenty.
Okay. So, and now that all the COVID's, uh, supply chain issues are over with, I mean, that cost us substantially because we weren't able to buy them, but it still feels like we're a little scattered in our replacement. And so it's, you know, we need to tighten that back up so we kind of know we're buying three vehicles a year.
Yeah.
Or two vehicles. If we don't need one for Cascade's contract now, we should be back to two, correct?
So Cascade brings the prices down to match Mountain Home Auto Ranch. Can we still buy from Cascade or do we have to buy?
If you do three at a time, anytime it's over seventy-five thousand, it's got to go out for bid.
Then we have to go out for a bid.
Mountain Home Auto Ranch, you don't have to because that's a state contract.
And this gets back to that original discussion about the vendor list. This would give Cascade Auto the opportunity to get on the state, the system if they want to be competitive with this.
Yeah, according to Oki, he, he will help write a contract for Kathy, Cascade Auto. If she agrees to those terms, then she can be on that list.
And I think that, that hasn't happened in the past and we need that in order for them to be eligible to even supply card.
Yeah, and I, I, I need to be a part of that CIP process. I haven't, I haven't, now, I haven't went through that, so I think that might be, uh, an eye-opener to me in terms of how the communication is between each department and how a vehicle is established.
Well, and the other great thing of that, because before we didn't have that process, Dan, and so everybody just coming in with what they thought they needed and we kind of went, okay, but now it's inventory, it's the vendors that are supplying it and it breaks which one is the most important to that group. But I'm still going to make the statement that the commissioners make that final decision. And, you know, it's great to have somebody else put the list together, but we may disagree with the rating sometimes and that's okay. So, okay, so I need a motion then to approve the bill of sales for the Cascade Auto purchases. I'll make a motion and we approve the sales for the Cascade Auto Inc. and Mountain Home also. You going to do it separate? No.
Separate.
No, that's the next one on the list.
Okay.
Let's do it separate.
So the amount's a hundred and twenty thousand, but it's not really a hundred and twenty thousand. It's a forty-five thousand each. That's more than a hundred and twenty.
They're all three the same price?
Forty-five, three to five.
Fourteen-six thousand dollars.
Forty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five?
Yeah.
Five and forty-five, ninety. Well, that's a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one fifty-five.
Yep.
Thirty-six, one fifty-five.
One fifty-five. So will you amend your motion, Neil, for include that figure?
Yes. Prove my mo-.
Men?
I made my motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second to approve the sale, bill of sales agreement, Cascade Auto for three Durangos for a total of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and then we're going to move on to the Mountain Home, so.
Yep.
That's next.
I was saying, last two pages. Okay, so this one did get through. Last two pages are.
It's on your, you.
Don't, don't write down that, that's stupid. Hold the title up.
So the cover sheet again says one twenty?
Well, this is a duplicate.
Is it? It's really not. It's the ninety-nine, three sixty-two?
I'll find each one without touching the other one.
Is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, what was that?
So the true cost is the ninety-nine, three twenty-six? The cover sheet says a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty thousand, forty, forty-nine, six eighty-one.
So it's just ninety-nine, three sixty-two?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And this one did not have to go out for an RFP because it is Mountain Home, so.
Yep.
I will move to approve the Mountain Home Auto Ranch purchase orders in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three sixty-two.
Do you have that? I've got it right here.
Ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-two.
Ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-two.
Second.
Did that say the clerk got it?
Huh? Okay. Oh, yeah, county clerk.
Okay, so next one.
I believe you can do that on his behalf today.
We'll move it up here.
That's just part of the package.
So then do I need to sign this?
Title and just the purchase papers.
Okay, we got a, sorry, we got a motion and a second to approve the invoice for Mountain Home Auto Ranch for whatever.
Ninety-nine, three sixty-two.
Ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Make sure I got them all, Jeff.
This is for my notes. Who, who did the Great West Engineering Amendment? Who made that motion and who seconded it? Who made that motion and who seconded it? Great. Understood. First thing he did.
I missed the yellow line. There's three copies.
It's on this one.
Just push hard.
Push hard?
Just have to hit your stamp really hard, buddy.
No, I'm in. I don't stamp very hard. I'll make sure it's got three, but all three.
The guy's being busy even though it hasn't been snowing.
That one's got.
They're doing various activities like brush cutting.
Here's the other one.
Second or, um. I guess there's a couple of areas where we need to, to sand in certain areas. In the county, so.
Did they get the west or the wisdom road sides done?
Yes, that had all been completed.
Get all their snow markers up.
On the S Bridge, yep. Oh, and, and throughout the.
Throughout the county?
County, yeah, they, they had that a long time.
Oh, did they?
They, uh, we gave them a, a fair amount of time to, to get all of their routes done, so. Which actually. Most of November, they were able to do that periodically.
Yep, yeah, I already mounted my markers up at my house, yeah.
That's for the third one, Gilly.
Hadn't snowed, now it's quit, see, no snow out there.
Yeah.
Sure need it, but we're not getting much. Ski Hill got up.
Not yet.
Ski Hill got all of two inches over the last few days, they're going two inches really.
They're open, last year it was Christmas, before Christmas.
Seeing dirt, dirt patches up there at Brundy's. We were up there just a few days ago and it was not pretty.
Yeah, I did not get.
Some people shouldn't be scared.
Mountain Home.
Practice, see a lot of that knees and backs.
Mm-hmm.
Everything else gone.
Okay, so.
What do you have to sign all of?
Right there.
I'd be, I better order a stamp.
Here's the website.
I'll just order my own. We can do it on ABC stamp. Only need you to sign a piece of paper.
Actually, you should get one for all of them.
Are they gonna be locked up? That's the thing.
Keep mine in mind.
Here are yours. Is your desk a couple? Take it with you.
I'm not leaving mine, so you're gonna have to get your own, sorry.
I'd be second mind if I had one.
Yeah, I think we have to be personally responsible for them, cause if not, to get two of them together, we're. Not in a happy place. Have to come take them.
They want my email too?
I can just put our email on there.
Sign your life away, buddy.
There you go, there you go, there you go.
Anybody else wanna see these?
Hey, so we're gonna move on down to Change Brid's Investment Program.
Uh, Chairman, Commissioners, this is the BIP, uh, program that's associated with the S Bridge. Um, I had, uh, our first kickoff meeting. Um, I wanna say it was, was it this week or last week? I don't know, last week, cause today's Monday. It's like, I can't, my heads are kinda swimming. So, this is to, uh, change the designation of the recipient, uh, of the funds. Uh, as we discussed with, uh, FHWA and LTAC. LTAC will be, uh, the administrator of the project. And it typically how these federal, um, projects are done is the recipient has always been the state. So the Idaho Transportation Department. But in this particular case, because the program of how it was set up. And the recipient was, uh, the, the three counties. Uh, FHWA has requested for LTAC to actually be the recipient of the funds. Because it makes sense that they are gonna be the ones administering it. I would re, I would recommend that, uh, we should follow suit. One of the other, uh, counties has already submitted their letter of recommendation on that. I request that we do that as well. And I'm asking for signing authorities for, for that specific letter to go out.
It's just referenced that these funds coming into LTAC are specifically for this project.
Yep, correct. We, we've already received our, um, uh, key number. So the key numbers have been established, uh, it's already in the program. They don't wanna do anything until this is resolved. Uh, where the recipient changes, uh, hands. And I think it's, it's in our best interest really to have LTAC to administer.
Yep, I agree.
So, uh, my only question is, you've signed, you sent the letter and you signed it?
I did not, this is a letter for my signature, but I'm requesting, um, that you give me the authority.
So that would be, that will be in the minutes, we don't need to add our signatures to that letter. Everybody go with that and entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the letter that has been submitted for Dan Coates, our Public Works Engineer, to sign. Changing the bridge investment program recipient to be LTAC.
Seconded. Moved in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. It's exciting, get this show rolling.
Yeah.
Now let's move on to the last action item.
Yep.
It's a delegation of authority. That's in your packet and I think if I remember right, you guys were asking for a hundred thousand?
Yes, uh, Chairman, uh, requesting, uh, as I, as I looked at our, at our budget. Um, and as I've stated before. I, I don't like the, like having a specific dollar amount if you don't know what the purchase is. So, um, I don't know how we wanna, uh. Extrapolate that, but it's just something that causes a little bit of a problem. So if I look at our budget. The, the main topic that I'm concerned about having at, at this level is our, um. Major repairs. And it's when we have, uh, a grader that a motor needs to be replaced. And then at the same time, Kat has requested that we also, while the motor's out. Look at the transmission and that also costs significant amount. Which, you know, one was like forty and one was thirty. I was thinking, well, if, if I could just have a hundred thousand on the chances that we have emergencies like that. Because I can't, on something like that, I can't wait even a week to get it back onto the. I have to, I have to react. And that's the only concern that I have is in those emergency events. Now it might, it might help in, in other areas, because if I look at, you know. Like our, uh, supply, it supplies for roads, you know, that's forty thousand. Fuel, we're constantly having to, you know, sign, uh, fuel, uh, claims. And then the higher ones are ones like our chip seal contracts. You guys would sign those. I'm not signing that. Or any kind of contracts where we have, uh, road improvements or anything like that. Uh, anything with a consultant. The, I feel the responsibility is up there, not, not with me. Uh, so I'm, I'm trying to work within the realm of our, our policy as it's, as it's stated. But I always feel like it doesn't quite fit our department because of how we have to operate. We, I.
It's all the different parts and pieces or.
Yeah, it's just.
Targets in there.
It's very hard, uh, and I struggle, I even asked Doug's advice on it. Uh, and as I was looking through our, our, uh. What we, what we spent out this last year. I felt like this was, this didn't get me a hundred percent, obviously. It's, I don't even know if it's fifty percent, you know? But it does give, uh, uh, enough for us to do the business that we need to do.
Cause you, you would, I mean, say the, the grader analogy, I mean. You have a hundred thousand to play with, yeah, it's in your budget. You take care of the grader and next week you have the dump truck.
Yeah.
You know, so that's.
There's always something.
Other ones, yeah, but it's in your budget. So you would always, it's not toweling, it's that hundred thousand just gives you the opportunity. I can fix the grader, next week I can fix the dump truck.
Well, the, the one thing that I, I'm concerned about is that specific grader. It was, it, it was over eighty thousand in the one grader. And so that's why I was thinking, well, I, it would be nice to at least have the hundred thousand. For a one-time issue with a piece of equipment like that.
That's what you need.
So, Dan, I'm a little confused, I thought all the graders were lease graders and they're under a warranty for five years.
Right, we, we actually worked with, uh, with Kat and, uh. They gave us a discount, honestly. Uh.
Oh, is this one the one out of warranty? A thousand hours out of warranty?
Oh, okay, so I just.
Over five years.
Still got a good deal on it because they, they took half the blame for it.
Another concern I have, and it's nothing, it does not, I'm not saying you guys don't deserve this, but. We gotta make sure we're not violating state code that limits us to seventy-five thousand. For RFPs and all that. I'm assuming this hundred thousand is just for vendors that we already have in the system.
Yeah, I, uh.
That was a new purchase over seventy-five, it has to come through this.
Yeah, that's a whole different, that's a whole different.
So I need to know how we define that.
So that's where, I, that's why I don't necessarily like. How, how it's written, because it's a dollar amount. It should be, you should really be the, uh, a, a list of items or, um. Only in certain situations that you give us the authority to do this. Cause otherwise, I mean, when I look at, you know, this is, this is off the Public Works, um. Website, you know, it gives you a very good framework in terms of what you follow. And that's something that LTAC had sent out a, a while ago that I still use as reference. It's outdated and I've been trying to look for an updated one, but it's, uh, it gives you a good guidance on that. And I would rather, uh, go through you guys to sign off on any of this. It's just in the event that we have a cascading emergency. Uh, I need to, we need to operate a little bit quicker is all I'm requesting.
That's, that's what that's for and that's what we, I like the way it's gonna work. Really do, I mean, if you happen to buy a brand new piece of equipment, you already know that months ahead of time.
Yeah, that's, that's a no break.
Seventy-five thousand, it's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, so it, it comes down to, do, can I? Do I have foresight in knowing when things are gonna break down? No.
No.
So there's no ability for me to plan that into the budget. Uh, so we have to operate it, uh, so that when an emergency happens. We look at how much we have and we absorb it, yes, we can. And then we can issue the.
Yeah.
And you remind me, do you, don't you guys have a contingency account of like a hundred or two hundred thousand?
I am not aware of a contingency amount.
I, I guess before I'm fully supportive of this is the fact that I think, you talked to Oak about it. Can you do a hundred thousand or do, are we limited by state code to seventy-five?
I think what I would like to do is amend it. In regards to the signing authority. So only look at the, uh, emergency issues, not necessarily that's a contract. Contracts you guys.
See now, El, that's, that's what that seventy-five thousand was that Oak was talking about. That is for anything under contract. Say we, he buys a vehicle that's over seventy-five thousand. And that's, that's doing a contract with Cascade or a contract with Cat or whatever. That's when we, that goes into the other part of his, uh, process. Signing authority just lets you guys be able to fix your equipment.
That's the, I think that's for, for, for us, that's the major concern is if our hands are tied.
Yeah.
Something's not getting plowed.
Yeah, and that's, we're not gonna go there, that's why we want you to do business.
That's why I wanted to have a little flexibility in terms of not giving us, you know, the dollar amount. Cause that doesn't give you guys the, 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 you know, the. Feel good in terms of, well, you know, road department's gonna go out and contract all these, uh, under, under a hundred thousand. And that's not my intent.
No, that's.
My intent is to make sure that our equipment, everything is operating. And, uh, if, if, if we need to do anything further than that, then that's when I come up and ask you guys for, for approval.
Well, if you read this, the last sentence kinda covers this. All procedures are applicable, state and federal laws, conforming to all that. So that kinda is the get out clause for the seventy-five thousand. You guys know that if it's a new purchase or a new contract over seventy-five.
Yep, we can't do it.
You can't do it.
Yep.
So we can amend this contract too, I mean, this is a fluid document.
But yeah, that's what I.
Also, the very first time we've done something like this, so we're gonna be discussing this on a regular basis.
Yeah.
But I'm just wondering if we don't put in here, you know, if you need more clarity, the amount of a hundred thousand for pre-existing equipment. And seventy-five thousand for anything, you know, purchased therefore.
That would be awesome if we could, if we could do something like that as part of a amendment to the.
Feel about maybe postponing this and get, getting this rerun and maybe involve Oak on this.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
And then come back in a week or so or.
Well, I'd like to get it as quickly as I can so that if something does fall apart, I got, I got a plan.
Have to get a hold of.
Something's already fallen apart.
Well, we're getting ready to pull a radiator out of one of our oldest trucks. Not another one in the world, so we gotta get one custom made and we're looking at about five thousand dollars for a radiator.
Does have more, how that.
No, it's, it's the stuff that I need to.
Can we go ahead, can we go ahead and approve this? And then you go to Oak and say you'd like this amended?
I would have to probably come back.
Yeah, then you come back to us.
Well, you could.
I mean, this lets you keep going.
Yeah, if that, if you guys feel comfortable in terms of approving it, uh, with. You hear the one that's a little. Discussion with, a, a, and, and clarification from, from the PA's office to identify specifically. Oh, an amendment to this, that at least if you guys can approve it with the stipulation. Then I can go ahead and do what I need to do for these five thousand dollars transmission. And we can, we, we can do, do that and then it'd be another week that I can get back with Oak on it.
No, we do that.
And actually you could put in this, I mean, if you have concerns about it. We have the ability for you to contact the chairman and get an emergency authorization. And then it just has to be approved at the next board member or next board meeting. So we could all, you know, talk to Oak about that if there is something that comes up where you need an emergency approval. You call the chairman, you get approved and then it's, it's on the next agenda.
And we can have an emergency meeting any, anytime or something like this. I mean, if you have a major issue tomorrow and you need to spend two hundred thousand dollars, we could get together.
Yeah.
The next day and.
If, if we can at least get the dollar amount so that we can get our other vehicles working appropriately. That would be great if, if you want, if you want to, to adjust the dollar amount to make it more comfortable or more palatable, I'm, I'm.
I'd really like to put it at seventy-five because that is the RFP process. That way that it doesn't get mixed up anywhere, everything's seventy-five thousand, you gotta have further approval.
I, you know, if, if it's an emergency, if it goes over that, because it was eighty thousand on that other piece of equipment. That part. I, if we, if we, if. that part, I, if we, if we, if we look at it per, not per invoice, but per item, then it might be okay for these equipment to go that route. I'm just trying to.
That's probably one off.
There's devils in the details in how this is gonna operate when.
Probably one off. We could revisit this in three months, and, you know, you can say, I've had a problem with it this many times.
With the seventy-five thousand, I think we're not all understanding the seventy-five thousand. Goes over seventy-five thousand, has nothing to do with replacing and fixing equipment. Seventy-five thousand is Public Works Department that says anything over seventy-five thousand has to go out for bid. That's purchasing a new piece of equipment.
I totally understand.
Has nothing to do with what Dan and, you know, these guys are needing to operate within their, their own division.
Well, we also don't, don't have a list yet of approved vendors from you. So, once you get that approved vendor list, that's gonna make it.
Well, we could, we could always adjust this after the vendor approval happens.
Exactly.
So, but in the meantime, we're stuck at trying to to get signing authority.
I don't have any problem with approving, approve a hundred, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd say, let's go ahead and approve this, and then you can work with Oak on, maybe a little more clarification on the your, on your end.
I think your division is probably the one that is the most.
Oh, absolutely.
Fluid, as far as your needs on this.
I don't, I just don't know how to operate if we don't have it at this kind of level. As I was looking at our, what we spent last year, most everything was contracted. That's where you guys would sign the contracts. It's really about, the concern that I had was the, you know, the major repairs of any equipment.
Sure. I think we need to tie this back to emergency, major repair issues, not.
That's, that's.
World general.
That's why, yeah, I didn't necessarily, as I, as, I think as we had a discussed before, I just didn't like the dollar, set dollar amount, because you don't know what the purchase item is being requested for. That's why I thought, well, I would rather have it, you know, as an itemized list of things that we can do. Whatever it might be, it's just, I think we need to have it at this amount, so that would cover any major repairs.
So, Neil, you wanna make that a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approved the allocation of signature authority form for the road department for one hundred thousand.
Second.
Move to second to approve the delegation of authority for the road department at a hundred thousand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
You're gonna come back to us with an amended document.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Oak for the verbiage.
It's your true intent, what you need, but.
You got anything else you wanna talk about?
Not, I think I, I'm over my time.
Lake Shore, real quick.
Lake Shore?
We don't have much on.
Oh, yeah, so.
Out here.
Flap, Western Federal Lands Project on Lake Shore. We did get confirmation that they wanna begin next year.
Nice.
Good.
Now, the, the, the best part of it all is it's a hundred percent federal aid.
Good.
There is no match. And I think it's out, I don't know, they, they sometimes get fluid in terms of when a project goes into construction. And I think I recall twenty-twenty-eight, so if, we'll have to look at the limits. Limits might be modified, because we won't have to put a match in there. We'll have to look at what that does to our budget, because we wanna get it out to a certain length of Lake Shore.
Does that, Dan, include the bike path, like continuation of that?
I think it does.
Can't call it a bike path, it's just a widened pavement shoulder.
It's a share. Now, it's twenty-eight foot road?
Well, we're gonna try to match what the city has out of the golf course.
You know what that is, Dan?
I think it's two, two eleven-foot drive lanes and two four-foot.
Thirty foot, thirty, thirty foot.
Thirty-six, that's what it is.
Thirty-six?
I don't know if those are twelves or elevens. It's a speed limit thing. Thirty-five miles an hour, I think you can get away with eleven-foot drive lanes. Jump up to forty-five, I think it goes to twelve-foot drive lanes.
So, it's a eleven-foot drive lane and a four-foot on each side.
For shoulder.
Should match what the city has, thirty-two.
So, that's thirty, thirty, roughly.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
That's good news.
So, it'll, I guess it'll start sometime after the first of the year, but they'll essentially wanna do an agreement to establish it, so.
How far do they wanna do that?
I'm sorry?
Which length do they wanna do on it?
Well, I think they had a certain dollar amount that they were trying to match, but I'm, I'm looking at maybe, because we provided matching our budget for it to to accommodate it, I wanted to see how far we could go further than that.
I think we talked about the cattle guard.
I was just barely past Blue Heron.
So, we'll go make it to the cattle guard.
One point three miles, or no, one point three?
Yeah. No, I think it's two.
One point three or one point seven or something.
Lurde Tamarack would be nice.
Lurde Tamarack, yes.
That would take a lot of. Anything else?
Uh, I guess the other, the other thing that is keeping me up at night is Red Ridge. Uh, this is the development that's going in up on the West Mountain area.
Careful what you say, because we can't have expertise at this moment in time. Needs to go through.
We have to look at the application before we can really decide.
That's the one thing that keeps me up.
And you're working with planning and zoning for your letter?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, part of what I was doing is doing a site visit last Friday on it, and.
Just make sure you're mitigating any impacts.
Yep, that's my plan.
I mean, to me, that's West Mountain for Longways and Smiley and all kinds of stuff, you know?
Okay, that's it very much. You guys have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep on going. Our next agenda item is the meeting minutes of December twelfth. Any concern? What's that?
December second.
December second.
December second.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of December second.
Second.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next one is the SRS letter to our congressional's, I guess.
Yeah, I went ahead and did up a letter. That is on SRS funding, asking them to move forward with that, so I will send a signed letter. I did reach out to them anyway, and Fulters already sent a letter to the Speaker of the House, Mike Johnson, to ask that this get approved before this end of session.
Could they double?
No, but.
You always ask.
We all sign that, then I can at least send a signed letter, not just for me requesting that.
I think this is a great start, Chair. I wish that we had asked for the original two hundred and seventy million that was supposed to be coming, but I understand it, whatever they feel like sending.
Is is pill one that has the denominator of, you know, how many people are in the county, how much it is per acre?
They both do. They both use the same formula.
Both use the same formula.
Both comes through the pill.
The formula needs to be raised, man, it's bad.
We can talk about that at Naco.
Okay, so then I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, we approve the letter to our congressional's supporting the Secure Village School funding. I got a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Gabby, do we have this on letterhead?
I did not, I don't.
So, if you maybe lunch or sometime, they get it printed out, and then we'll bring it back, sign it.
Gabby, if you could get it on letterhead, I don't have any letterhead up.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, and the last agenda item on our morning session is to amend the March Commissioner meeting dates.
I missed the fact that we are in Naco on March third, so March has five meeting dates, and we had decided that we would X out the thirty-first, but we need to eliminate the third. So, our meeting dates will be the tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first. And that actually was caught by Catlin, so.
So, you wanna make a motion to that?
I would move that we approve the March meeting, Commissioner meeting dates to reflect March tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first, to allow the three of us to go to Naco.
You guys know, do we take, we don't take St. Patrick's Day off, correct?
No.
And that's on the seventeenth. This is the guy who's at the bar. Okay, we got a motion and a second to amend the March meeting dates to March tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first. Oh, didn't you second it, Neil? Lou, did you second that?
You seconded the meeting date.
Yeah, second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, this being the last agenda item on our morning session, we will adjourn.